I call to order the Gladstone City Council meeting for November 13th, 2018 at 6:30 PM. Good evening, everyone. How was your Halloween? I hope you all came down to our party. Yeah? It was great. It was packed. Well, today is World Kindness Day, something that seems to be missing through all of this crazy political season, but it can start here, so go out and be kind tonight. Today, our consent agenda includes approval of the October 9th, 2018 regular meeting minutes, approval of the September bank balances, budget report for period ending 9/13/2018, approval of September check register, legal costs on projects, department head monthly reports for 2018, Oregon Public Works Emergency Response Cooperative Assistance Agreement. And the items on our regular meeting agenda include item number eight, which is public hearing for ordinance 1482, amending Title 17 of the Gladstone Municipal Code, also called the GMC, relating to temporary structures. Item number nine, public hearing for ordinance 1147, amending Exhibit A of the solid waste rate schedule in accordance with approval of ordinance 1469. New item number 10, to consider a resolution declaring a local emergency and permitting a warming shelter at the Hillside Christian Fellowship located at 6460 Glen Echo Avenue. New item number 11, to consider project enhancements for the Gladstone Civic Center. Item number 12, the city administrator employment agreement. And item number 13, Willamette Falls locks update and funding request. Tammy, could you please call the roll?
Counselor Milch?
Here.
Counselor Neef?
Present.
Counselor Tracy?
Present.
Counselor Reiner?
Here.
Counselor McMahon?
Here.
Counselor Mercero?
Present.
Mayor Stempel?
Here. Could everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any agenda additions or corrections?
No, thank you, Mayor. You made the two additions to our council agenda this evening with the new item 10, 11, and then carrying on with 12 and 13. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, before we start, I would like to say a few words regarding the city council. I think the first most important limitation is that as we sit here, we are representing the citizens, not our own personal agendas and beliefs. There are a lot of times when a decision that's being made doesn't align with what we think personally, but we make a decision on what's best for the city as a whole. That doesn't mean our personal beliefs have changed, just that the city's needs were more important. As we discuss and consider matters, there are laws and rules we have to use as the basis of our decision. These start at the federal and state level, then filter down to our city's comprehensive plan, city charter, codes, and ordinances. We do not have the luxury of randomly making decisions, but instead, we have to be consistent and take a path that is defensible. I want you all to know that we appreciate the time that you take to be here and participate in this process, and I would like all of you to respect the desire of others to hear what we're talking about, so if you could keep your side discussions at a minimum, that would be wonderful. And also, turn off your cell phones, please. My goal is to keep this meeting respectful and engaging. I hope you can all do this, so thank you. Next is business from the audience, but I want to make sure for those that haven't been here before, that in order to speak, there's basically two times. The general business from the audience, there's yellow cards at the table, and you can also speak during specific agenda items, which you would still need to fill out the yellow card, and then just note when you would like to speak.
And what do we do with them?
Bring them up here to Tammy, and then she'll call you forward. Does anybody else need to go fill out a card quickly? All right. Business from the audience. Tammy?
I have no business from the audience, other than for agenda item number eight and number 10.
All right. So, next is our consent agenda. Any discussion?
Seeing no discussion, Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve consent agenda items one through seven.
A second.
Motion was made by Counselor McMahon and seconded by Counselor Tracy. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda passed. Are there any correspondence?
Nothing.
All right. So, we're going to move on to the regular agenda. First is public hearing, item number eight, ordinance 1482, amending Title 17 of the Gladstone Municipal Code, also called the GMC, for temporary structures.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to have our senior planner, Melissa Aaron, come up, and Sean Boyle, our community liaison for the department. Do you have the PowerPoint? Let's see how far we get without that, and then if we need it, we can do that, so. Okay?
All right.
Do you have your phone drive, Melissa?
Yep. Hello, City Council. Can you hear me okay? Closer? Betty here, in the back. You're okay? All right. I'm Melissa Aaron, senior planner with Clackamas County, but part of City's Planning Department. I'll give a brief summary of kind of how the amendments originated, and then Sean can fill in after I'm done. So, there were a series, as I understand it, of community outreach meetings, which led to identification of a lack of regulation for membrane structures or temporary structures, easy up tents. It was identified in a nuisance code kind of suite of amendments that were brought forward, including other non-zoning Title 17-related changes, such as I think there was parking of cars on the front lawn area, things like that. So, there were a number of items that were passed in the rest of the municipal code, but there were certain things identified in the police department's report that needed to be addressed in the zoning for them to be effectuated in the city or carried out when we review building permits at the county level and planning staff signs off. So, a couple of those are related to temporary structures. There were a couple different proposals that's changed, when it's gone back and forth in kind of a working session at Planning Commission and at City Council, and then in the formal recommendation from Planning Commission that's now before you. So, what we're looking at right now is setbacks for temporary structures where none currently exist. There's kind of a gap in the code, so there's setbacks for accessory buildings, but temporary structures, which don't necessarily always meet the criteria of a building or a carport per the definition in the code, are not regulated. So, you see a lot of easy up tents in side yards with zero setbacks, where they would not necessarily be allowed if they were a building or an accessory structure currently, and the community, through the community meetings and then the police department coordination had identified this as an issue. So, the planning staff, based on that, initiated the formal amendment process, which went before the last Planning Commission meeting. And they recommended, consistent with what staff was recommending, the setbacks with a slight modification for street-side setbacks. So, there's concern brought forward by one particular citizen, which identifies restrictions on corner lots, which may be overly rigorous in certain situations, when you have a corner lot with a street-side setback of 20 feet, and then a front yard setback of 20 feet, it becomes a very constrained situation. And on the smaller R5 lots with a 5,000 square foot lot size minimum, there's concern that there isn't anywhere to place nice-looking coverings for an RV that aren't really a nuisance. So, to address that, and based on the public testimony given at the Planning Commission meeting, we amended the previously recommended suite of zone changes in Title 17 to add a five-foot reduction for a street-side setback. So, all the other setbacks of the underlying residential zoning districts, R5, R7.2, and MR for multifamily residential, would apply now to temporary structures, and there's a definition, you'll see, for what that means, and there's been a little bit of back and forth about what to include there. Currently, I think metal structures are not included, as you'll see. So, that would kind of be something I think Planning Commission mentioned, if you read the back and forth there, that they advised you to touch on or to consider in your deliberation. But the actual amendment language is attached to the back of the staff report. And then the only other note I'll make is enforcement measures to ensure internal consistency with the way the other sections of the municipal code are handled. Staff's recommending modifications to the enforcement measures section of Title 17, Chapter 17.98, to kind of streamline the process for our code enforcement. Sean, here, staff member. So, if you have any questions, I'm available for comment. I also have a PowerPoint, if you want visual examples of kind of the implications of these setbacks. We use that at the Planning Commission meeting, and it can be useful if you're trying to visualize. There's a lot of different scenarios. I have a table I made, which shows the current setbacks required for accessory buildings in the code. But there are reductions if you have an accessory building in R5 that's less than 450 square feet. You can have a zero-foot setback on your side or rear. So, there is flexibility built into the code. It's site-specific. But it really, all the amendments are saying is that temporary structures would be subject to the same setbacks as accessory buildings currently are, with a street-side setback reduction.
Questions?
Could you repeat the exemption?
Sure.
The exception, I'm sorry.
Sure.
The side setback. You just said something about the R5 and then...
So, there's a side yard setback, and then there's a street-side setback, which the code distinguishes between the two. The street-side setback, currently in the code, there's no reduction allowed for that, so it's 20 feet for an accessory building. On corner lots, it can be constraining, so Planning Commission recommended allowance for a five-foot setback on street-side, on corner lots.
Just on corner lots only?
Just on corner lots only.
Okay.
Thank you.
And this PowerPoint, does it give us more information?
It provides some visuals.
Yeah, it's helpful.
Could we go ahead and look at that?
Sure.
Can everybody see it out there?
So, this is a bit repetitive. It just walks through the development of the proposed code amendments, so where it started at the May 15, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. And it was more of a working session, went to Planning Commission again, formal, let's see, City Council voted to support the proposed text amendments, and then they went to Planning Commission, that's the last action, and then now it's before City Council for final adoption. So, important to note, it would only affect residential zoning districts, so light industrial, commercial districts would not be subject to the setback requirements.
Could you go back one slide?
Yeah, sure.
So, for everybody, the areas that are commercial are the, what, darker red?
Mm-hmm.
And where's the rest of the commercial? Industrials?
I tried to find the legend, but...
Really? No. We have two little tiny spots of industrial.
So, it's easier to think about it. The residential is the beige, so anything that's not a lighter or a little darker beige color would not be subject to the setback, proposed setback.
Okay, thank you.
So, here's a table that shows the current setback requirements for residential zones. So, you'll see the front, rear side, and then the street side. And I put in red the five-foot reduction that's currently before you, recommended from the Planning Commission. Temporary structures would continue to be allowed on private property, so there's no prohibition outright of them being in the backyard area or anywhere else on the property. They would just need to meet the setbacks. There's concerns that there would be a kind of unintended overlap to regulate current activities, such as lemonade stands, or someone putting up a temporary cover to work on their car. So, the Planning Commission, and through kind of staff changes we've worked on through the kind of public process, we've added in a code section, I think it's... See here, under 9B, you'll see exceptions for temporary uses, for current activities, such as lemonade stands, gardening, temporary mechanical repair, temporary storage, and other similar activities. The Planning Commission expanded what was previously a 10-day time period for those to 15 days, and then that's cumulative, so they could not be erected for more than 30 days in one calendar year. So, the intent there is to allow current activities to continue to occur with temporary structures that are erected, just not to allow them to be maintained on a property longer than that, and established as what really turns into an accessory structure.
So, the R7.2 is 7,200 square foot lots, and that's generally most of what's outside of the core.
Right, correct.
R5 is the 5,000 square foot smaller lots in downtown area.
Correct.
And MR is multifamily residential.
Multifamily residential. Mm-hmm. Yeah, so R7.2 is the low-density residential zoning district, R5 is medium, and then MR is the high-density. So, really, we're seeing the R5 corner lots are the most constrained right now, just in general.
And those are the ones that you really are more apt to not have the garages.
Yeah, they're kind of the mid-century style with no real, if they're on the corner lot, there's not a lot of room for garage or other storage, so I mean, there is a need for...
Right.
...storage. It's just, where do you put it?
Right.
Yeah, do you want me to go back? So, the downtown core is a darker beige. I know it's hard to tell, and I really did try to find a better zoning map, but the actual adopted one in the comprehensive plan is black and white, and no one can find the original color copy, so it's not very helpful.
What is the light beige?
That's the R7.2. So, that's, as you get away from downtown, it becomes lower density. So, the intent is to encourage higher-density residential use closer to the downtown core, consistent with, you know, just general community planning. So, there's currently reductions for side and rear setbacks for accessory buildings in all residential zones. The proposed changes would not affect those reduction allowances, and then you would also have an additional street-side reduction added in with the Planning Commission change modification.
And those are just allowed outright, without having to apply for variance of any sort?
They're allowed outright if you meet certain conditions. For instance, in the low-density residential, you can reduce your side or rear setback to five feet if you have an accessory building that's detached, it's one-story or lower, and it's under 450 square feet. Or in R5, you can reduce to zero if it's detached, one-story, and less than 450 square feet. So, it depends on the zoning, but there are allowances built in already for reductions, just not for the street side.
And no additional variances above and beyond what you already have, it's just a standard allowed?
Correct.
And just for clarification, you use the term "five-foot reduction," but you don't mean reducing 20 by five feet down to 15. You mean reducing to five feet. So, it's really a 15-foot reduction in what the...
Correct. Yeah, sorry if that's confusing.
Yes.
So, it's a five-foot total setback.
Okay.
So, it's not reducing 20 feet by five feet.
Fifty, right. It's all the way to five.
And you'll see that in the actual language. It's clear.
Uh-huh.
It says, "on corner lots..." I'll read the exact language, so it's not confusing. So, "on corner lots, the street-side setback can be reduced to five feet."
Got it.
Okay, continue, please.
So, here's an example, and I picked properties outside of the city of Gladstone, because I didn't want to inadvertently pick someone's house. So, A and B are both temporary structures. You can see from the street-side view, they're sheltering, I think, a boat and an RV. So, assuming this is within an R5 zoning district, A is meeting a five-foot side setback, and then B, the building with a zero-foot side setback, could be allowed outright right now because of the reduction allowances, assuming it's under 450 square feet. So, both of these temporary buildings would be allowed right now in the code if they were, if temporary structures were made to meet the same setbacks as accessory buildings.
Okay. So, again, if it's less than 450 square feet, then it can go down to a zero setback?
In the medium-density residential, which is the more constrained zoning district.
Off-street, though, right?
So, it's just the side setback, not the street side?
Okay.
The street side, which you'll see in the next example, can be reduced to five feet, not to zero.
Also.
But you, I mean, you have the ability to change that. That's just what the Planning Commission recommended.
Okay.
You can modify that. That's one of the proposed code amendments, so it's not set in stone. So, in the R5, on corner lots, you'll see a lot of the time, there's a constrained lot with a street-side setback of 20 feet, and then a 20-foot front yard setback. So, on a 5,000 square foot lot, doesn't leave you a lot of room. And I mean, you don't want an RV in your backyard, and I understand, if it's aesthetically pleasing what you're building, and it's not a nuisance, then it makes sense to some degree to allow a reduction on constrained lots. That's why we showed this example. And this was brought up by a concerned citizen who has a situation ongoing, where she's trying to build one on her, I think it's her street-side setback. So, the way that the definition reads for front lot line is you can, on a corner lot, either of the lot lines separating the lot from the street can be designated by the property owner, it's their choice, as the front lot line, and then the other lot line is the street lot line, street-side lot line. So, in this case, we would be choosing the front, where the driveway is, as their front yard setback, and then the street side would be where you see the red 20-foot street-side setback. So, in this case, where the boat is, that membrane structure would be not in compliance with the current 20-foot street-side setback. Again, there's no reduction in the code right now allowed for street-side setbacks. So, we would be reducing that to five feet, which, with the Planning Commission's modifications, would allow both of those membrane structures.
Okay, so they'd be allowed. All right.
Correct. And then, just something to remember, the clear vision standards in the code still apply, so if there's a safety concern or a clear vision issue, we would still be looking at that to make sure that that kind of fits in, even with the proposed reduction. So, here's staff's recommendation, and I have highlighted in red, just to clarify, the changes that the Planning Commission's recommending, so the modifications, so you can see exactly what kind of came out of that meeting with them. And I'm available for questions, and I don't know if Sean wanted, do you want to add anything?
Sean?
Sure. So, it's important to note that what we're talking about, whether or not these structures would be permitted or allowed under this proposal, that they are also currently permitted or allowed if it were to not pass as well. So, in these areas where we are concerned about street-side setback, there are no current regulations for that, because these structures aren't considered a carport or a building. All right, so, where this all originated from the beginning was from, you know, however many years ago it was now, I think it was about two, maybe a little longer. And the specific complaint that was to be addressed was the tarp garages, the structures where they're largely covered with tarps that deteriorate pretty quickly and become an eyesore pretty quickly. And that was the primary focus at the time. In the, you know, at least two years, it's gone through multiple revisions, and how many, I can't keep track, but it's evolved into, you know, a set of regulations to address a problem that we have not been receiving complaints about.
But this came up originally in the town hall? Is that where this first...
The tarp ones did.
The tarp did.
Correct. And so, it's gotten, you know, miles from where we originally started. We were, you know, addressing a very specific issue, and now it's encompassing everything that isn't regulated already by the zoning code, and so, just something to be taking into consideration.
The zoning code that hasn't been updated since, what, 1979?
Correct.
I mean, yeah, there are some good things in there, and some things that probably need to be reviewed, yes.
All right. Any questions from Council? I know we have some yellow cards sitting over there waiting impatiently, so if you guys could stay close, so that you can address issues from the audience.
Would you like me to leave a certain slide on? Is this okay for discussion purposes?
Could you put up the one with the city map?
Yeah.
The zoning map. There, that one, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah.
Tammy, first person.
Bill Osburn.
How many cards do we have?
Two for this one.
Oh, that's it? All right.
Hi, Bill Osburn. I live here in Gladstone. As I stated at the Planning Commission hearing, new laws don't drive up our property values. These new laws, you keep implementing, only serve to make Gladstone less livable for families, or for those in the older areas of town, due to physical structure or financial limitations. While in extreme case, a house may take longer to sell if it's next to a house with garbage and junk piled high, it doesn't affect the property value. We already have laws for that, and expanded definitions earlier this year. Just to clarify, it is incorrect to use the justification here of livability or beautification, because we already have laws against storage of solid waste. I know that was a big argument that came up earlier on in this process, not so much now. Why should it be up to our police and our tax dollars to enforce a law that only makes sense to those who have money and control issues? The real reason for even discussing, that's the real reason for even discussing this issue. A few people didn't like these structures, or at least some of them have, and set out to deny the rest of us that choice. The fact that you can legally throw a tarp over your vehicle for protective purposes also negates the agenda to beautify the neighborhood. The same people who might not want to live next to somebody with their boat under a membrane structure probably wouldn't want to live next, or would like to see an ugly tarp draped over it either. Unless the end game here is to ban all RVs and boats from Gladstone before we move onto cars as Portland creeps into our streets. The argument of overwhelming support keeps coming up as justification of these new laws, including this one. Where is the overwhelming support? Public testimony has always been against this attempt to deny property owners' rights. If there's truly, this is truly defined as a legal hearing, you must take a preponderance of the evidence into your decision. If proponents are not willing to testify, then there is no evidence there is support, other than the police code, or police and code compliance. The police are only addressing this issue because the council told them there was overwhelming support for these new laws. It seems that this is not the truth as such. All of these new laws, including this very one, are based on a lie. I assume this was executed by the two recalled council members. That being said, as you deliberate on this issue, I urge you to remember that the council is here to serve the people. The police are here to serve the people, too. Who does the law really serve, or who does this law really serve? I ask you not to adopt this unneeded... I ask you not to adopt this unneeded and oppressive law. I ask that you represent the majority of Gladstone and not just those with money and control issues. We should never, I repeat, never adopt laws with the caveat that enforcement and implementation of fines would be a last resort. My fear of what happens if we don't have Chief Jolly is coming to fruition, as we might end up with Chief Grumpy, with Chief Jolly leaving us here in December, is my understanding is. I would also gladly volunteer my time to help write a new code that would address safe, safely securing and maintaining these structures in order to satisfy those who don't like the few that are broken and torn and the weathered covers. If you still decide to push forward with this new law, I request that you grandfather in all the existing structures, structures currently in place. And on the setback issue, I'd also like to point out that the lots, the R5 lots, as I understood from that, we have a zero setback on the sides, but the R7.2s wouldn't. I don't see the reason or the justification of that. Some people, including myself, at one point in time, put up structures to protect firewood. When I did, I put it up against my fence line, and this was outside of Gladstone, I know I lived in, lived in the Oak Grove area. This protected one side of my wood, it was up against my workshop on the other, which was built right on the property line, which probably wasn't legal when it was built, but it was there when I bought the house. So, the five-foot setbacks, and I believe it was a 15-foot setback from the rear, if somebody's putting up one of these cheap structures in the back, uh, just to protect their firewood, that would still limit their ability to do so. The town hall meeting keeps getting brought up, and as I've pointed out before, there were 91 questions asked. Now, that's what I got from the city. Tammy Banick actually sent me a list of all the questions when I asked about a year ago, and I went through and counted that, and I believe it was two or three were about codes. Now, in that meeting, we broke into small tables for discussions, we came up with a number of questions, concerns that people had, and then we voted as a table on the top three, and those were the ones that were presented. So, if there's all this support over all these new codes that have been happening, including this one, it didn't show up there. When you look at the percentage, we're talking three or four, three or four percent of the questions were about more, more codes. So, I'm hoping, you know, this, this one here, you guys give some thought to it.
Are you just about done? Because we have another person that wants to speak, too. Thank you.
Uh, I hope you give some thought to it, because I haven't seen the support, I haven't seen people coming out. I have seen people come out and get active about, uh, not adopting this, so please remember that while you're considering this tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, as a technicality, could you please open the public hearing at 6:55?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's okay. The public hearing for item number, hold on, item number eight, ordinance 1482, amending Title 17 of the Gladstone Municipal Code, temporary structures opened at 6:55 PM. Sorry about that. Next, Claire Coy.
Hello. How were you guys tonight?
Good, how are you?
Good. Okay. So, last month, I presented to the Planning Commission regarding installing a metal RV cover at my home. I presume you've all had a chance to review that video or the notes in tonight's packet. The issue is that I live on a dead-end street and cannot meet the side street setback. Although, at the Planning Commission, they recommended taking the 20-foot requirement and reducing it to five, I explained to them that they, that may help some, but does not help in my case, as the way our home is positioned on our lot, there's only 13 feet between our home and this street-side, so there's no way to give them five feet, and this is the only location on our lot that it can be placed. I explained we gave up 400-foot of backyard for this project, we laid 25 yards of gravel, and that it was not bothering anyone when it was a six-foot fence standing in the exact location that I want to put up the cover. As where we could have put it up in the backyard, we were going for something that folks wanted to look at. They recommended that I apply for a variance. I looked into this process. Because Gladstone doesn't have a city planner, they have the position outsourced to the county. This is only important because I'm subject to the county variance fee. It is unfortunately $900, and you pay upfront with no guarantees and no refund if you're denied. In other words, there's no free review like you had hoped, Councilor Tracy. As where I would prefer to go through this process so that everything is as it should be, I just simply do not have this kind of disposable income. Did Gladstone ever have a planner at the city level, and if so, was the fee for, what was the fee for a variance process? I guess you could say I'm struggling with paying the high-cost county fee for what would be considered a normal city function. I spoke to many different people at the county, I was even referred to our public works department as it is a city limits road. I also learned the original property owner, Artley Dickerson, who, by the way, still resides on Dickerson Lane, surrendered the property to the city in order for Dickerson Lane to even come about. The county told me, to this day, it is still a non-maintained local access road. They said I'd be better off saving my $900 towards repair and maintenance of the road because someday, when paving and maintenance is needed, it will be up to the residents to take care of it. They also recommended applying for a street vacation, which also sounded very expensive. In the Planning Commission meeting, it was evident they were interested in helping, but not if the city or county would incur any expense in the process of helping me. With this said, my property taxes have more than doubled since we bought our home in 2003, but even with the repeated annual increases, they're always paid and they're always paid early. I just don't see where asking for one small thing in all of these years is a big financial setback, even if it does require a little taxpayer give-back. So, I'm here to ask for some ideas regarding our situation. Clearly not all situations on all roads are the same, as has been illustrated. It reminds me of a street that's in an unincorporated area, but it isn't. The city and county bear no expense for anything associated with Dickerson Lane, so why should I have to come up with so much for just the right to apply? One thought that I had and mentioned to Councilor Milch last month and received favorable response was this, in the scenarios where a resident meets and exceeds the front setback by two to three times more than what's required, and if the home's on a dead-end road like ours, maybe a side-street setback could be reduced to zero. Councilor Milch thought maybe we could come up with a sum-of-type arrangement and recommend we continue to talk about it. Again, Dickerson Lane's accessed by four homes behind me, there's a total of six homes, but one resident doesn't drive and one is all bus riders. I've been presenting on this topic for a couple of months now. I was able to collect signatures on a petition that would allow consideration of Gladstone's current language regarding temporary structures stay. Mayor Stempel said she'd consider a petition if it had a minimum of 150 signatures, which we were able to collect 160. In my journeys around Gladstone and in speaking to folks, I heard many real-life situations from folks with concerns. One elderly woman, who is on social security only and can't afford to build a garage, but her truck leaks, so she parks her truck under a canopy in order to keep the water from getting inside. Another gentleman who lives in an older home in Gladstone, and let's face it, there's many without garages, as we spoke of tonight, parks his vehicle under one of these canopies. I think the biggest concern I heard from folks was that they couldn't see how a new law should be something that would affect them if their structure had been there for years. There were many who had gone to great expense to put up even the metal ones and were blown away that they may be told to take it down if it was not put up in a location where they can meet setbacks. I explained sadly it is true that it had already been proposed that grandfathering would not be allowed, however, the residents of Gladstone feel that grandfathering should be allowed if this is passed. There was also one other common denominator, and that was that they wanted to be part of the decision process. Some of the folks I talked to were even housebound but didn't see how not being able to make it to meetings should affect the way that this was decided for them. Questions were raised like, is this going to be on the ballot for us to vote on? So, I've touched on different things here tonight, but to summarize, what can Gladstone do to help residents in these unique situations like mine, which are going to be more the exception to the rule rather than the norm? And lastly, what can Gladstone do to aid in allowing grandfathering of temporary structures that's passed? I had the opportunity to talk to several council members on this topic, and I kept hearing that you don't feel like you're ready to vote on this, although there have been many comments also that you're growing weary of how long you've been talking about it as well. So, I guess I would just like to ask that we take more time, if that's what's needed, to be sure that all citizens that should be involved in this decision are being reached and not just the few in this room. Thank you again for your time and consideration on this important topic.
Thank you. Anymore? Alright, Melissa, Sean?
Yeah. Mayor, would you mind closing the public hearing?
Do we have anybody else that wants to speak on this topic? I'd like a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing's closed at 7:12 PM. Staff, do you have any comments, additional information?
I'll respond to the variance fee. So, the city's fee schedule was different before, I think it was January, February of this year, when the city adopted a new fee schedule for all city fees. Referenced in that fee schedule for land use planning fees was that the city adopted the county's land use planning fee schedule, so it was adopted by reference.
Alright.
So, it is the, a county fee, but it's adopted wholesale as the city's land use planning fee schedule, so that's where that comes from.
Okay.
And it's adjusted every year for inflation, but it doesn't rate, rise necessarily larger than that every year.
And I'd have to go back and look to see what it was at the county's structure, I don't have that information.
It just seemed really high to me for something like this.
Is there a certain percentage every year that it raises, or is it, how does, how does that come about?
It's based on the inflation index, so, um, they raise it, I, I don't know the exact amount, it depends how much the inflation rate increases per year, but it's really minimal each year that it goes up. I don't know the evolution of the county's variance fee, um, but as far as I know, it's just been based on inflation from a set rate probably when the planning department was created, gone up from there.
I don't see any vehicle here for a variance, something simple like this, which would be a situation-by-situation.
The variance is covered under the zoning code.
Okay.
So, the variance process is for all the rules in the zoning code.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's in the, uh, procedures chapter for options to, in certain situations that you can basically exempt yourself from meeting setbacks if you have a unique-shaped property that's constraint, a constrained lot.
Okay.
Is Dickerson Lane a public street or a private street?
It's public.
Well, what's the definition?
I know.
Because it, it seems to me-
So, there's a definition, and I can read it from the law.
Well, I mean, Melissa, part of, I understand, I, I visited with the Coyes, and part of what I witnessed out there or I saw, it looks like a portion of their property has been vacated, side of their lot's been vacated, so I'm not even sure they've got, I, I don't know if they're R5, they've got a 5,000-square-foot lot, because it's a very obvious, if you look at the house directly behind them, that, you know, 35% of that lawn has gone away and turned, been turned into street.
Right.
Now, Ms. Coy just told us that she's checked in and inquired and that this isn't a public street, so we need to answer that question, don't we? Because it does, does our zoning variance for the setback on a public street apply if it's not, if it's a private drive?
I think she said it was a public street, but it's not maintained by the city, is what you-
Right.
Okay, so it is a public street, yes?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have a couple of those.
That sounds like an interesting way of going.
Yeah, we have Echo Way is one, too, there's a couple of them.
City Portland's already here, so I don't think I brought it. Okay, thank you.
They pay my wages.
That's, we will go there. No more questions for staff? Alright, discussion?
Well, a, a little bit, I think, sure. Bill was talking about how there was only, there was two people for nay today, but I think in the previous discussions we have had that people have come, there's been, I think the last time we had this discussion, there were more people in favor of it than not, so, just because there's two tonight, uh, doesn't sway me one way or the other. And I, I think it cleans up a lot of things, it makes it very clear where you can have those, and we, uh, you can have them back, uh, behind the, the face of the house on either side, and just, I think, just makes it cleaner for a, a lot of things, and it keeps the junk yards out of the front, front yards a little bit more, just one more little tool to, to try and keep, um, uh, the city going forwards. And, of course, we're going to talk about property rights again and stuff, and then I'll just give my quick spiel, of course, with every right, you have a myriad of responsibilities as well that go along with that right to, on the property, um, that include your neighbors and the whole, the city as a whole, so, I agree, we have property rights, but we have huge responsibilities that go along with them as well, and this is one of them.
Councilor Mercer?
The, uh, only concern I have, there seems to be a confusion regarding a temporary structure that's good to be in your property 15 to 30 days a year, okay, and this carport, which as I see it, will be there for as long as they want, and, uh, I see no problem with the carport. The setback may be an issue, but appears to me that some variance can be gotten for that, uh, but it is totally a separate issue than temporary structures.
Councilor Reisner?
Well, I thought the, the big issue was the fact that they were made of fabric that was, uh, torn, discolored, of different colors, and that's not really addressed here. And also, a, a big concern is, as, as mentioned, um, not allowing any grandfathering in of, of current structures. I think that we should, that, uh, someone that's had one of these for, for years, and then in 30 days or whenever this takes effect, all of a sudden, that's, they're not, and I don't think that's fair or appropriate.
So, Oregon City did something similar to this recently, and they grandfathered them in, but it was for a set period of time, right? It wasn't just forever, I think it was five years or something, and it was conditional, where they could grandfather it in, but it had to be kept up, it had some stipulations attached to that. So, it's, it's been addressed at other places. Councilor Milch?
Um, I, first of all, I agree with Councilor Mercer that the, the term that we use, uh, and, and Councilor Reisner as well, the terms we use to describe this, uh, have created some confusion in themselves, because when we talked about, when we described it as membrane structures, most people, that connotes something that's fabric and soft, and it didn't seem consistent with a metal structure. And then when we talk about it being temporary, really, we wanted to make a distinction in the language between, uh, structures that were intended to be temporary and used on a temporary basis, put up and then taken down, and structures that were created for that purpose and sold for that purpose, but which people decided to use basically permanently in the erected position. Uh, and so, uh, if you're substituting a, a structure that's intended to be temporary for a permanent building, um, the idea was that you, you pass, you, you abide by the rules that would apply if it were a permanent building. Um, I went back and found minutes from January of 2003 in the city council where this issue first started coming up. Uh, one of the city councils, well, somebody addressed a certain, uh, temporary structure near an address, uh, and, uh, Mike Funk, our fire marshal, who is here today and who has an institutional memory of at least 10 terabytes, because I asked him about this a few months ago, and he remembered specifically, uh, something from 16 years ago, uh, whether something would exceed limits authorized by the Uniform Fire Code, and would be contacting the property owner, that was about a specific structure. But a city council member at the time asked whether other types of temporary structures, in particular the kinds that can be purchased from a home improvement store, and staff advised at that time that the Clackamas County Building Department does not require building permits for them, although the structures are required to meet zoning code setbacks. So, we've tried to be consistent with what the policy of the city was nearly 16 years ago on these things when they first started emerging at that time. ago on these things when they first started emerging at that time. And that's the basis for looking at it on a setback arrangement. And when the planning commission met last month and Mrs. Coy came and testified, I thanked her for her testimony because she helped put, you know, a real face on this issue. It was not just something in the abstract. And she also demonstrated that it's possible to be a homeowner who wants to do this and is still concerned about her neighbors and doing it the right way. And that's what we're also trying to promote here. It's a little bit of the responsibility that Counselor McMahon mentioned, that you don't just do this without asking anybody. You make sure that it's okay with your neighbors the way you're doing it. And I think the people that have done that and that have not received complaints from their neighbors, you know, perhaps we should be a little more lenient in terms of grandfathering with those kinds of situations. Because what we want to have is people that are concerned about both the safety and the aesthetics of this, and that's the reason for bringing these codes into being.
Counselor Neese?
Well, that brings, you know, value to the home and where it's not going to be hurt. And I like the idea of grandfathering, because, I mean, I think of some of the structures around the city that I've seen and where they've got the metal carports or whatever you want to call them, where they have the motorhomes in them and parked, but they also have them secured so they're not going to blow or cause damage to other properties around.
Counselor Tracy?
I'm just, I can sense and I understand the frustration of the folks that are out there trying to do the right thing and the folks who've put those structures up to protect their property. I understand that. I feel like we've had, to Counselor Milch's point and I think yours as well, Mayor, you said it earlier, we have these different definitions of these different buildings as we're talking about them, and I don't think we've been very clear about that. And it seems to me that a lot of this would be on a case-by-case basis, whether grandfathering in or going forward with the zoning requirement. So I'm hoping that we have enough folks and have the ability to hit these requests one by one, because it seems to me like every one of them pretty much is going to be a case-by-case. There are so many factors for every one of them. I mean, the Coys property for one, that property looks like it has been setback, pushed back already. They could have, if they went out for variance, it could very well fall in their favor. But again, it's a $900 extra expense, and I understand that. So, I mean, yeah, that's where we are. I think this is all case-by-case. As we go forward, it's going to be, we're going to be putting work into doing everything that we can to make sure that they're in compliance and/or they get to do or not get to do what they want to do with this. I mean, I don't see any other way. There's so many factors.
And again, I don't feel that Sean's going to be running out there and handing out citations to everybody for everything.
Citations are not the first step.
Well, fines or whatever.
Right. Yeah, no, that's definitely not the first step.
All right. So what would we like to do?
A little clarification, I guess, first. We're not talking steel structures at all, right? Is that correct?
It's not included in the definition currently.
Okay. I just wanted that to be clear.
Triple check.
It's just tarp.
Just membrane structures.
They keep sneaking their way back in.
They are.
And I was just kind of referencing to that.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's gone back and forth so many times that I forgot. So let me just read it, so we're all in agreement.
Thank you.
An area covered by a plastic tarp, fabric, or metal membrane that is either attached to a rigid framework, natural feature, or some other structure that is used for storage. So I believe the planning commissioners were debating taking that out and got kind of pretty far in that debate, but wanted to leave it up to you whether or not that goes in there or not.
And it does not include greenhouses. That was more phone call and text than anything, was people upset they were going to lose their greenhouses.
No, it does not include greenhouses or weatherproofing of a vehicle, boat, or other individual item by tarp or other type of covering, as long as that covering is attached directly to and covers only the particular item.
So they can protect.
There you go.
So metal is back in?
Metal's back in. I'm sorry for the confusion.
Metal membrane.
Well, metal, which is the metal structures.
I know.
All right. Which is probably a better way to do it anyway, to keep it consistent.
Well, I think how it happened is because we've expanded the definition from just a membrane structure title to temporary structures. We wanted to include all of the temporary structures. I think that was the evolution of that discussion. That's why it's been in there. But again, there's been controversy and a lot of back and forth. It's gone in and out.
Any further discussion? Is somebody ready to take a motion? Or do we want to circle back and do this another time? Are we ready to make a decision?
I'll go with, I make a motion to approve Planning Commission's recommendation of approval of file Z-0244-18, including, I don't know what, about how intense ordinance 1482, amending text amendments to Title 17 of the Gladstone Municipal Code regarding temporary structures, and also including grandfathering in current structures.
Grandfathering them in without stipulation, just grandfathering them in wholesale.
Correct.
They, sorry, just to clarify again, if you remove that section of the current proposed amendment, they would just be considered legally nonconforming if they don't comply with the newly adopted setbacks for temporary structures? So they would just be subject to the normal requirements for nonconforming structures already in the code.
Do we have an inventory of these structures now?
I will know which ones are grandfathered.
Right, we're talking about nonconforming use now, we're just throwing it up in the air.
And we can use aerial photography to some degree, but if there's tree cover, there's no way to know, or there's something blocking it, or it's just obscured, it can be difficult to track. So something to think of.
All right. Well, we have a motion.
Well, I'll second, but I'm wondering if we might, that grandfathering part, we might work it into the actual language. It seems to me that the references in Section 3, 9, Subparagraph C, which currently reads, "This section shall apply to all temporary structures in place before, on, or after the effective date of this section." I'm wondering, how would that be modified to provide, let's say, as Mayor Stimple mentioned, a five-year grandfathering of things that were currently in place? Could you suggest language that would, or Ashley, if you have an idea?
You could say legally nonconforming temporary structures are allowed to remain for a five-year period from the date of this ordinance, this ordinance was passed.
Just add a sentence at the end of that sentence, then?
I could suggest a date certain. Yeah, go for it. No, I mean, your wording is fine, but just a date certain. Because when you add it to the code, it's not necessarily going to know when this ordinance took effect.
Okay.
Right, the date that it formally passes or is adopted.
Five years to do four years, though. I mean, I don't understand that part. And somebody can sell your house, shouldn't you have to clean that up?
Nonconforming structures are allowed for a five-year period from...
Well, it would allow people that are nonconforming now, if this was to pass, to keep that structure for up to five more years, before they would have to move it back to within the confines of the new regulations.
Where would that go?
I mean, you're saying that 18, but why is it 15 feet high? And that's kind of hard to prove.
And the fact that, as mentioned, down in the R5, a lot of, people don't have the ability to have garages, but can use these to protect their cars. So for only five years, I think, isn't fair.
Tammy?
How do we prove that? How do we know it's been there four, five, six, or seven years? How's Sean going to do that?
Yeah, that's not sustainable.
That's the inventory question.
The other component is that, you know, someone buys a house that's there, and five years is up next year, and they don't know that that has to be moved now.
Okay.
That's not going to be, you know, it's not like a permit where you go and find out what's going on with that.
Can it be conditioned, grandfathered in, conditioned upon it being maintained and used for simple storage, instead of suddenly somebody's storage room, stuff is all moved to under the structure?
I mean, that could be a hard distinction to make in the code and then apply on a daily basis, reviewing building permit proposals, signing off for planning for setbacks, what the use is, and then tracking that.
Right. So the motion still stands? And he added, and including grandfathering in existing temporary structures. Do we have a second?
Counselor Milch, second.
He said if.
Well, and I was wondering, if you want to eliminate, grandfather everything, you would more or less eliminate this Section C.
Why have it?
Right.
Or you would just say, "This section shall apply to all temporary structures installed after the effective date." We'll put a date certain in there.
And I mean, you could specify that are secured in place or in good functioning condition, but that's also hard to track.
Yeah. And that's subjective.
It is subjective, yes.
The other thing to think about here is that this now also allows for the tarp garages, which was the original-
Not allowed.
And the original proposal was to prohibit those outright.
Right.
And so...
Okay.
Well, didn't you guys say that it's not including metal? I mean, is it not for...
No, it's including metal.
It does include that.
Yeah. So the motion stands. We don't seem to have a second. So do you want to withdraw your motion?
It does, I guess, according to Robert Shulgrove.
So do we have another motion?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Planning Commission's recommendation of approval for file Z-0244-18, including approving ordinance 1482, amending text amendments to Title 17 of the Gladstone Municipal Code regarding temporary structures.
Do we have a second? Motion was made by Counselor McMahon, seconded by Counselor Mercer. Any further discussion? All right. Since this is a public hearing, this is first reading. We need a roll call vote, please. Tammy?
Counselor Milch?
Yes.
Counselor Neese?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Yes.
Counselor Reisner?
No.
Counselor McMahon?
Yes.
Counselor Mercer?
Yes.
Mayor Stimple?
No. So since it was not unanimous, we need to hold this over to the next meeting for the second reading. Thank you very much. Next item is public hearing number nine, Resolution 1147, amending Exhibit A of the solid waste rate schedule in accordance with approval of Ordinance 1469. Staff?
Well, another fan favorite, let's talk about raising our rates for our solid waste rate structure. The city of Gladstone has a franchise with Gladstone Disposal Company. In your packet, there's some brief history on how we amended our franchise in 2016. That was not a rate increase. And what you have before you this evening, two years later, is Gladstone Disposal is asking for a rate adjustment. In your packet, you have a letter from Gladstone Disposal, and Alan's here, he'll go over that with you. He talks about what the percent increase would be depending on what kind of receptacle that you use. He also wants to talk a little bit about why the recycling market is driving these increases up in the community. And then what we tried to do in your packet was to provide you a summary of the comparative rates. And I can also share with you that Oregon City, Clackamas County, Milwaukee, and Lake Oswego just updated their rates, and we think Westland either just did theirs or last year. So in the comparative rates on attachment to, those numbers that you see there are very recent rate increases. So Alan, did you want to give a brief overview on your request?
Mayors and counselors, thank you for this opportunity to come before you tonight. We don't like to come and ask for increases unless they're necessary. In this last year, more like 15 months, it's been a very tough market for recycled materials that we collect. As you can see in the memo that I sent, it represents about 63% of the increase is directly related to the recycle markets. These markets have, on the west coast, primarily the material goes to China, or had gone to China. Five years ago, started to initiate a reduction in the amount of what they call contaminants. Easiest way to describe that would be for cardboard, you throw a pizza box with grease in the recycled cardboard. Because of the grease, that cardboard is contaminated and is not acceptable. China put in a half of percent contamination limit. Most of what we were sending in that time period was 9%. About a year and a half ago, they started saying, okay, we're going to start living by our half percent, and all the material that's being shipped to us has to meet our inspection. That happened for about four or five months, and then they just said, forget it, we're done buying from the United States. So obviously, it's flipped the markets. We went from being able to receive about $20 a ton for the recycle market, or material, to where we are now paying $60 to get rid of it. So that is the main drive for why we're here. At the same point, Metro, for Metro South, in '17, they actually had a rate reduction that helped us greatly, but they have now increased the rate more than what they lowered it. And so that has also driven up our costs that we need to pass on to provide for the disposal of the solid waste that we are collecting. It's just that we do enjoy being in the community. We like seeing it maintained. And we are here to service as the best we can to make sure that the city remains livable or even raises the livability of it. Item before us is one of those that you were discussing, and that's why we're here. I'm here for any questions that you might have.
What are you doing with the cardboard now, then?
It's still being exported. It's primarily going at the moment to Vietnam, but I understand that they're starting to lean towards China and shutting us out of their market as well. And so Indonesia and India are taking some of it. At the same point, some of the Chinese recycling companies are opening up closed plants in the United States, and they're going to start producing the pulp here in the United States and then shipping it over to China. And see, the pulp will be free of the contaminants, and that will allow it to be imported into China.
So the Chinese got rid of importing from us, so did they find a different place that they were importing from? Or what did they do to make up for the difference? Or did they?
I don't know.
Okay.
I really don't know.
So it looks like it's about a $2.20, $2.50 per month, depending on the size.
On the standard, the most common size, which is a 35 gallon, it's $2.25 increase.
Per month?
Per month.
Okay.
Just for comparison, the county in the urban area surrounding Gladstone and Oregon City and such, they went up 250.
Okay.
One for staff, maybe, is the monies that we receive from the franchise fees are going to increase then also?
Yes, we get 5% on the franchise fee, so that would go up incrementally as well. Any more questions?
We're required to do a 30-day notice- We're required to do a 30-day notice, and we would assist Gladstone Disposal in how we publicize that, as they would do the same with the customers.
Okay. But this is a resolution, so we don't do the first and second reading, correct?
Correct.
It's just we have to give a 30-day notice. Any other questions?
I just had a comment. So, to answer your question, Counselor McMahon, one of the things that China realizes is that with their robust economy, their domestic recycling capacity is not, they were overcapacity with the imports, so they're basically tooling their processing facilities to meet their internal domestic demand. And then, to Alan's point, they are actually coming back over and buying some of these old mills that they had gutted and taken materials over to China with, to basically start them up for the pulp. And it's, we sold out many years ago, unfortunately.
All right, would someone like to make a motion?
Sure, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution 1147, a resolution amending Exhibit A to Resolution Number 1092 by revising the solid waste rate schedule.
Second the motion.
Motion was made by Counselor McMahon, seconded by Counselor Milch. Any further discussion?
I, sorry, it seems to me, Alan, that in reading your memo, you guys have deferred for a while, while you waited for market correction, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, in that, as you deferred, you were actually paying for the disposal of recyclables, that people believe there is a robust market, and still, I believe, believe that there's a robust market for, is that correct?
That's right.
About a year, year and a half?
It's been about a year.
So, this has been a bottom line cost to your company, you have deferred, waiting for market correction, the market correction did not come, and now you are finally coming to us and asking us for the rate increase.
Correct.
Is that correct? Thank you.
Any further discussion?
When was the last time we had a rate increase? It was.
Couple of years ago.
2013, overall.
2013.
In 2016, price, the rates changed, but that was to cover the 5% franchise fee.
That's right.
I forgot about that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you.
May I ask Alan one more, sort of unrelated question? The last time we discussed the solid waste contract with the city, you kind of had an exclusive contract with us for that. Does that mean that if somebody, as an individual, wanted to start up a business that went around and picked up people's recyclable metal things that they have in their home, they really should not be doing that in Gladstone, that that should, that business should be given to your company exclusively?
I believe the franchise agreement states that if they just go around and collect it, they're allowed to do that, on recycled material. If they charge to do that, that's against the franchise agreement.
Okay. I see now and then people asking about somebody to do that service, and people referring other services that are not your company, and I wanted, you know, I wanted it to kind of be brought up again, so people are aware of the part of the agreement that we have with you.
Right.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Can I make one more comment? Sorry, while you're still here, Alan, I want to make sure that the public hears that you have a rate of return, a return on revenue that is actually governed by the county's policy, is that correct?
That is correct.
So, you're within 8% to 12%, that's reviewed in a rate review process by the county and by us as we issue the franchise, is that not correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's on an annual basis by the county.
You have pass-through costs, but you have a rate of return that's actually a set rate of return, and you don't vary too much outside of that rate of return, is that correct?
The rate of return is 8% to 12%.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Could you, we're done with this topic, we're on to the next one. I guess. Just a clarification.
What?
I was just wondering if we had shopped around and compared like rates and adding to other services?
We have an exclusive franchise for 20 years with Gladstone Disposal, so, and maybe in the next couple of years, if that was something that the council wanted to do, we could, but we still have about seven years left on our exclusive franchise.
Okay, thank you. Next item is new number 10, Resolution 1152, declaring a local emergency and permitting a warming shelter at the Hillside Christian Fellowship located at 6460 Glen Echo Avenue. Staff?
Mayor and council, what you have before you is a resolution.
Underneath your pile.
Does everybody have a copy?
I've read.
We're trying to find it.
I've read it.
Okay. Last Thursday, I sent you an email letting you know about the possibility of a warming shelter opening for homeless population at Hillside Christian Fellowship, which is specifically 6460 Glen Echo Avenue. At the time, the information, there was miscommunication between the county and the staff, and we acknowledged that, but our best interests were at heart in trying to open up this facility in a timely manner. As we flushed through the bureaucracy of what that means, we had thought that the county's resolution that they approved a couple of months ago would blanket into the city of Gladstone, but we have local control, we have local jurisdiction, that the city council is the one, the governing body that must approve a resolution to declare an emergency in regards to anticipating severe winter weather, and those without shelter or without sufficient means to stay warm. So, you have the resolution, and you've read through that. I also decided the best thing to do tonight was to bring in Fahid, who's with Clackamas County. We also have the pastor here this evening, and we have the fire marshal. And so, if you have any additional questions, what we're trying to do is to expedite this approval process, but we also recognize that it should have gone through the normal planning commission process to ask for a conditional use permit. And if we had done that, then the residential area and the people that live there would have had an opportunity to speak to this. So, if you look on page two of the resolution, the findings that we're authorizing, if you concur, is that the fire marshal must approve the use of the fellowship and its property for a warming shelter. They will ensure that the use of its property as a warming shelter does not unduly burden its neighbors or other members of the community, and will take all reasonable steps to promptly respond to concerns from neighbors or other community members while operating the warming shelter. And that the fellowship will apply for and receive land use and any other approvals if it wishes to operate after May 1st in 2019. So, you're basically approving this for the winter season, and then they would go through the normal land use process. It's been a very good cleanup in our collaboration and how we communicate, and again, everybody is here, wants to answer any questions that you have before you make this decision.
I know my question was, I thought we already had one in St. Stevens, but that's not.
That's correct, it's just a shelter.
It's just a shelter.
Right.
Right.
I was curious as to why we aren't using a city facility versus, in this case, a church?
The only city facility we have is closed right now because of the flooding that happened at the senior center, and that would only be our potential. This actually, and, you know, was something that the church took on themselves to want to make that a warming shelter.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Did I ask you for a comment?
Yeah, I thought there was cards.
Yes, I have.
Cards.
I have five cards. Okay, well, we're just asking staff right now. Any other questions for staff?
I'm kind of curious why it's an emergency all of a sudden now, why is it coming to us? I assume they've been working on this for a little while, and just so.
Mayor Stimple, councilpeople, and this is Dave Morris. I'm Fahid Brown, Housing Policy Coordinator with Clackamas County. The question is, why is this an emergency now? This, the warming shelter needs in the county have been recognized as an emergency for the last couple of years. The number of unsheltered people in the county, number of our residents who aren't able to afford shelter throughout the year, but particularly in the winter when that inability to afford shelter presents a life and health safety risk, have been increasing dramatically. We saw a 54% increase in the number of unsheltered individuals in the county between 2015 and 2017.
Say 54%?
54%. Yeah, and so, that number as of the point in time count in 2017 is about 750 individuals that we counted that did not have access to any kind of shelter that is approved for human habitation. We had typically contracted with three warming shelters that had what had been in previous years adequate capacity for the needs that were, we were experiencing from the community. Beginning two years ago, we saw that that was no longer the case. So, that was the really bad winter two years ago. All three of our shelters were overcapacity on many nights. We had a 19-day stretch where we had emergency warming shelter needs every night, there was all that ice and snow. And we had to, in often dangerous conditions, move people around. I was driving buses to move folks that were seeking shelter to our shelters that were full, to a shelter in Malala that maybe had room for five people, and then working with Multnomah County and their emergency management folks on, hey, you've got five beds over here in Gresham, I'm taking people from North Clackamas over there because they're needing shelter. In that context, that year, six people died in that, between our two counties, from the cold. So, that led us to, this last year, the county declared a state of emergency, and the, there was a grassroots effort to kind of grow out the capacity with the Homeless Solutions Coalition of Clackamas County, of which Dave and Councilwoman Neese is a member, and with our kind of community partners like the churches, we were able to expand our capacity last year. Now, that included a church that was in Portland and not even in Clackamas County, but we were providing transportation from one of our shelters to the other shelter. So, it's become an emergency because of the numbers of people that no longer have the ability to safely shelter themselves are growing up. Our shelter capacity had been remaining static up until two years ago. Last year, another wrinkle was that one of our three shelters had burned. The Clackamas Service Center had a fire in the previous summer, and so that shelter was, so we were down to two shelters. And so, we very quickly opened shelter in churches in Multnomah County and Clackamas County to serve the people in our community that needed those, including churches that are part of a network called the All One Network that Dave is a member of. So, that is what we have done again this year, is to find places where we can expand capacity to meet the need. And the Hillside Christian Fellowship said they had acquired a building in Gladstone, and that was when we began to go through this process of having the fire marshal take a look at it, having our building official get involved, and then communicating with staff here about what would we need for, you know, for this to be a use, an allowed use, is it an allowed use, is it not an allowed use, but it's covered by this emergency declaration by the county. We'll know that declaration only covers unincorporated areas, so it doesn't. So, this was kind of Thursday, Friday, communication with our staff in the county, the city staff, and Thursday night was our first night where our thresholds were met. So, we are in an environment where two of our shelters are up and running as of Thursday, and another one is still acquiring some materials and staff, and then hopefully, a fourth is before you right now.
Where are the other shelters?
The Malala Warming Center in the city of Malala, the Father's Heart Street Ministry in the city of Oregon City, and it has a backup church called the One by One Ministry, so if the Father's Heart reaches capacity, they can direct people over to this partner church. But that partner church would not open unless the Father's Heart was at capacity, and then the Clackamas Service Center in North Clackamas.
So, what does St. Stevens do? Are they in this network at all?
I don't know the answer to that. I know Colin, who is, who we typically have the warming center at the senior center, had said that it is not a warming center, it is just a shelter.
A shelter, right, and I wasn't sure when it kicked in use. Any questions?
So, what does a warming shelter mean? So, you mean that it's only used when it's below 32 degrees and 10 miles an hour wind or something, so you have parameters?
Our parameters are, on any night where the overnight temperature, including wind chill, goes down to 33 or below, in the ZIP code of the operator, so we have all of our warming shelters look up their local weather service forecast that night, they do that by 10:00 a.m. the morning of. If at 10:00 a.m. the morning of, they see that the forecasted temperature overnight dips below 33, at 33 or below, including wind chill, then they are authorized to open according to our contracts, but not otherwise.
Okay. And I think that's a very good question, from an operational standpoint, because we've not done this before, we would need to have a point of contact, so we understood better the operation, so the fire and police department understood the operation. And so, if the council approves this, we would need to have a logistics meeting, so we understood more about how people are being transported to or from, and what the hours of operations are and all that.
And just to add to that, there is a stipulation in every contract, including the contract with Hillside, that includes all of the contacts that must be emailed the day that determination is made that warming shelter were to open, and we would surely include your fire marshal or your police department, as we do in every other community.
Okay. Any other questions for staff?
And just in a practical sense of what happens, someone then, you announce that you're open, or you determine that you're going to be open, someone comes there, you have beds, you have rooms, what's available to people who come?
It differs from center to center. Typically, though, there's either a cot or a cushion, like a sleeping pad on the floor with blankets, and those pads are sanitized and cleaned after the use every day that those would be used. That would be the case in this facility, the Gladstone facility, there were a whole lot of sleeping pads that were purchased for a different church during last year's effort, and that's part of the network that Mr. Morris is a part of. And so, those sleeping pads have been moved over to Gladstone in anticipation of those being needed there. The county, I have closets of blankets near my office, so whenever one of our warming shelters needs those, I can distribute those. But yes, it's, there's an opening time and a closing time. Typically, people in the community become aware of that slowly. So, for example, we've opened our first night last Thursday. The Father's Heart, which has a capacity of 49 people, has not had a night where they've seen more than 25 people, because we've been open a week. By late December, folks that will kind of get out in the community, oh, there is a place I can go when it gets really cold, okay, I'll be sure to go there. And so, the use, the need for the shelter kind of increases until about the end of December, and then it kind of trickles off.
Thank you. Can I ask you about your nightly operations? How does this work? If I'm coming to you to seek shelter, I come into the shelter, am I going in and out all night long, or am I coming into the shelter for a duration of time throughout the night?
Again, that's, that does differ depending on the operator, but the Father's Heart in Malala, for example, have an operational guideline manual that says you're in for the night, so once you're in, you're in. One of our partner churches in the previous year didn't have that stipulation, so folks were able to maybe go outside and have a cigarette and come back in, but that was their, they designed that parameter for themselves. So, it differs.
But your typical experience is that once somebody comes in out of the cold, they want to stay in out of the cold and not go back out.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
And Robin, I think she stated that it was like, what, 6:00 p.m. at night, they come in and leave by, well, with them, they serve a breakfast, so they have to leave by 7:00 a.m.
Right.
And then when they open up the breakfast after, after everyone's out of the building, and then they can go back in and eat.
Mm-hmm. There have been cases in very extreme weather where there was ice and snow, and the ability to travel over the roads or with the transit was interrupted, where our overnight emergency warming shelters would operate on a number of days. So, they'd be open overnight, but it wasn't safe in the morning because there's not even a bus, because TriMet isn't even working, that they wouldn't say, okay, it's 7:00 a.m., time to go. But that happens very rarely.
And just to share with all of you too, there's three locations where they do come and serve breakfast, and they start in Oregon City, under the bridge, at 7:30 a.m., Father's Heart does. They do come to Gladstone, and it's over at the DMV center area, and they serve breakfast over there, and it's from 10:30 to, or 7:30, 9:30, and then, or 9:00 to 10:00, and then there's a third location that they go.
Any other questions for staff?
Uh, yeah. So, what kind of outreach have you done with the neighbors?
That would be, Dave?
So, yeah.
This is just starting, just.
Well, so, Hillside, we have a main campus, we meet in a middle school in Happy Valley. For 13 and a half years, we were at Sunnyside Elementary School, because they're having earthquake preparedness on their building, our campus has moved to Happy Valley Middle School. Our plan over the next however many years would be to have presence in a number of the school districts with inside of Clackamas County. Our mission has been to help those who are marginalized. When the property was made aware to us, we took possession of it as a. Uh, when the property was, um, made aware to us, we took possession of it as of September one. And because of my involvement with the, uh, Homeless Solutions Coalition, with All One, and becoming aware through a warming, uh, center, uh, team that was put together by the Homeless Solutions Coalition, and the state of emergency that was stated, I can't, I was invited to a meeting, uh, because of our involvement in the North Clackamas School District Zone. And, uh, in that meeting, heard of the declaration of the state of emergency and the lack of bed space. And, uh, so I simply said, well, this is, this, in all due respect, it's not necessarily the county's responsibility. I feel like the faith community, we should step up to the plate and help those who are in need, because that's what our faith would really require of us, to help our neighbors. And so I said, give, give me forty-eight hours, and we'll, we'll come back with a solution. So I went back to the collaborative work of the All One Churches, which there are about twelve churches involved in that, and said, folks, this is, this is what, this is why we exist, to help. And we got a response that was unanimous, that we would, we would do something. And so the, uh, Sunnyside Foursquare Church and Pastor DJ Vic, they opened up their facility last year. Now, they operate a school, and they have a number of other things that are functioning there. And so it, there was a tremendous stress on their operation. And so after the warming season was over, he indicated that they really were not going to be in a position to do that again. Well, we didn't have a space. So we began immediately, in fact, the, the warming, uh, center team that was kind of tasked to where are we going to find a location, um, we sought space. And we were only going to be meeting one more time after the season, so we were going to meet, uh, in April, and then we would suspend until sometime, uh, August, September. But because we did not have a location where it was going to be, we knew there was going to be a deficit of beds. And so we, we continued to meet roughly twice a month, trying to resolve a number of foreseeable issues. So in September, when the property on sixty-four, uh, or excuse me, on Glen Echo sixty-four sixty came available, um, and we, we entered into a relationship with the owners of that, of the Oregon Ministry Network, um, we took possession. And our, it took a little bit of time for our team to ascertain what we needed to do in order to make that a viable space to be used. And we began to do that work immediately. And so that, that initiated, uh, some work on our part. And it was at that point where we began to communicate with what's, what's the next steps? I started communicating, I sent emails to Melissa, I sent, I think, Linda, I may have even sent you a, uh, an email. I started communicating with Fahid, as well as a number of folks over at Clackamas County, what is the process? How do we get in? And what, what will be necessary? So had we had an opportunity to do something back in May, we would have applied for the conditional use permit and had all opportunity for public, uh, awareness and, uh, discussion. And we would love to do that. We would love to, uh, share why we do what we do, and how we do what we do, and, you know, in terms of trying to keep things safe and healthy. Uh, but we just, we didn't even know that we were going to have the property until August twenty-third, and then we took possession on September first.
Yeah. And my biggest concern is purely the citizen engagement piece of this. And that's what a, a conditional use permit process does. I don't know why there was a disconnect, and they were never told they had to apply for that. So here we are. And I do know that you have people here that would like to, to speak, and, and that's part of your decision that you'll be weighing out this evening.
Okay. Are we ready to have public?
Uh, one more question. How many beds do you have for the seven hundred that you, uh, that are homeless?
So the, uh, seven hundred and fifty is the total unsheltered count. Um, at the maximum use, so on, on December twenty-fifth last year was our, um, busiest warming shelter night, we had a hundred and thirty, thirty-four people. So, um, on the coldest, worst weather night of last winter, the, the, the largest group of, of individuals in the county seeking warming shelter was a hundred and thirty-four. So just to, so I'm not, when we're, uh, planning warming shelter capacity, we're not trying to plan for seven hundred and fifty, because we've never seen that many people seeking it. Um, we have, uh, in, uh, the, um, Malala Warming Shelter, a capacity of twenty. In the Father's Heart, there's a capacity of forty-nine. Now we're at sixty-nine. And the, um, uh, uh, Clackamas Service Center has a capacity of thirty-three. Now we have ninety-nine.
What's the capacity for this one?
Eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight. So that would put us above the hundred point, and with some excess capacity.
Oh, right here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is this also, is this in the church itself, or is it in the modulars? Didn't I see something about the modulars?
Modulars.
That's where they'll be staying? And they're on the backside of the church, is that correct?
Correct.
All right. Are we ready for public testimony now? All right. Stay close.
Okay.
Tammy?
Glenn Rissberger?
I'm Glenn Rissberger. I live at sixty-five-ten Glen Echo. We're just two houses above the church. Uh, I've been making notes as I go here. First of all, um, from our point of view, my point of view and my wife, um, we're concerned for two things. One is, of course, first of all, to ourselves, to the livability of our community. And there's questions about that. And the other is concern for these people who need the warming in the night. So some of the questions we might have, um, can't be answered quickly, but they can be addressed in due time. And I'm sure that the people, uh, involved in this, uh, have thought some of it through. My first comment to them is, um, we both have a mutual responsibility as good neighbors. And we think it was not so good for them to not let us know that this was going to happen. We found out two days ago. And they've known about it since August. We don't think that's fair. So some of the concerns that we have, first of all, is, um, under the livability of our community is, um, is housekeeping. I've personally been involved in cleanup projects around through Rotary Club and other organizations, solve in cleaning up areas that have been involved in, in homeless situations. The most recent was, uh, Johnson Creek, uh, cleanup. And that was, oh, they, they took away something like three big dumpsters full of stuff. So, uh, we're concerned that that may be happening in that area, although what we hear is that people are going to come and go. So our, our direct question, um, then is, how do people get there? We heard, uh, in earlier comments that they will be bused in by the organization. So what happens in the morning when it's time to leave? Uh, are they going to be picked up and transported to someplace else? Where will they be transported? We'd kind of like to know. At whose expense will they be, uh, transported? Or will they be free to stay in our community? And the third possibility we are concerned about, because we don't want this to become another homeless camp in, in the area. Uh, and, and as an aside to that, uh, there's already drug-related activities going on on Glen Echo. And, you know, police presence, uh, frequently. So we're concerned that that would continue, or, or be increased. Um, and that's a prejudice, it's not a fact. So we heard what the hours are going to be in the morning, uh, the number of people that, that stay there then, um, will be, uh, turned out, if you will. Uh, is it, is it going to be definite that they can't, cannot stay there? Will they be free to roam the community? What, what will be happening there? Uh, those are all things that we've seen in other communities where they have that. Things, um, the question about the church itself, um, is this going to be a permanent, uh, fixture to our community? Uh, will it always be a, uh, a warming center, um, a homeless, uh, place? Will people be able to stay there, uh, for a length of time? What was described to us today is, on a day when the temperature is below a certain degree, thirty-three degrees, that, uh, the facility would open, and then it would close in the morning. And, and it would close depending on weather conditions. So it could be that they end up staying there for, you know, we've had, we've had situations where it's been below thirty degrees for three weeks at a time. Uh, what happens to those people? How are they supported while they're there? And that's, that's not our concern, it's, it's the, the church's concern. But, uh, still something to, uh, to be questioned. Um, what happens to the church during the rest of the year? Uh, is it a facility that will be old? Church means something different to us, uh, as a place you go Sunday for services. This is called a church, but it's you, being used as a homeless shelter. And, uh, uh, so during the period of time where the, where the weather is continuously above thirty-three degrees, um, how will this place be designated? And, uh, I guess that's, I've said enough. I, what I, what I would like to do is, you know, my, my wife and myself particularly, I know our neighbors, we, we want to be good neighbors with these people. And, uh, you know, with the new pastor, we haven't even met him, we'd like to do that. So open your front door and invite us in, and, and tell us what you're doing, uh, would be a good move on their part to, to move this forward. Um, I'm not asking for anything specific, just wanted to make some comments.
Want some answers?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Very good questions.
Yes. Next. Doug Hall?
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Doug Hall. I live, uh, on Birdsong Way in the Bird Haven subdivision. This is my first time being in front of you to address you.
Welcome.
And I have, thank you. I have my concerns about, uh, the people that you want to shelter, because I've had an involvement with individuals in my life that are dysfunctional and have been for as much as thirty years. And they've learned how to play the game, a few of them. One way is they get their food stamps, and they find somebody that needs some food stamps, they sell their food stamps, and they buy alcohol. And the alcoholism goes on for years and years. And some that don't do alcohol, they do the drugs. And I'm not talking about the majority, I'm talking about a minority. And I can't put the percentage on it. It would be wrong for me to sit here before you tonight and tell you what percentage, because I don't know. But there's a percentage of bad people that they're going to bring to our neighborhoods. We have children and grandchildren. I'm in the autumn of my years, so it doesn't matter as much to me. But I do have grandchildren who I love very much. And we are taking risks with these group of people coming in, because able-bodied, healthy young men with wits about them can get a job tomorrow at labor-ready, get on a bus, ride two and a half hours to Tillamook, get off the bus, work eight hours, ride two and a half hours back to Portland, and be paid a hundred and twenty dollars a day for just doing physical labor. So my heart goes out to everyone that needs shelter. But these people, some of them, work the system, just like squirrels. If you feed the squirrels, they'll go out and, they'll hide in their nuts for later.
(laughing)
And they'll play games with you. Like, I'll tell you this one alcoholic that I know, and I've known for thirty years. If you let him go out to smoke his cigarette, if you watch him constantly in the dark shadows, he'll have his bottle out back further. And you may not see him, he may do a figure eight, next time he may do a perimeter search, but his bottle will be out there and it'll be back into his church drunk. And I have no sympathy for those, because it's broken me. I don't want to get too personal and share with you my personal life. But I know, I want you to know what I've witnessed and lived with. We've got to be really careful, and I'm going to tell you, your drug use is going to be brought to this community through this, and it's going to increase. And alcohol, alcoholics, there's going to be more assaults, and the Gladstone police are going to be much more busy. And for women, single women and women with children, they should take priority. And to heck with the young men that can't get a job today if they got their wits about them. I, I don't have anything more to say. It's emotional, and I don't envy your positions. I don't ever want to be in your position. That's why I just be a quiet little citizen here in Gladstone. And let the world go by.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next.
Terry Powell? Jerry Powell? Terry? Terry?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Terry Powell. I live, um, close to Glen, at, um, fifty-six forty Echo, or no, one-eight-five-six-five Echo Way. Um, right above the church there. Um, a lot of the comments, I would have to say, Glen and this other gentleman had pretty much said it, um, for me. My biggest concern is, um, safety of children. We're right, um, right by the high school, we're really close to Cracksburger. Um, there's a lot of, um, kids that are going to be walking up and down the road during this time that these so-called, this warming shelter is going to be activated. Um, I don't have a problem with, with a warming shelter, I just don't think it's in a good place. Um, my, one of the questions that kind of really, um, that I have, that I'm concerned about for the people that are going to use it, they, if I understand right, that they're going to be staying in a container in the back of a church?
Modular building.
Oh, the modular building?
Yeah.
So they, there would be heat and?
Yes.
Okay. Because I was, I kind of, in my mind, that it was going to be a, um, a container, and I'm going, no, that's not going to work. So anyway, mostly what I would have to say is the, uh, the livability of the neighborhood. I'm raising three girls by myself, uh, young children, daughters. Um, and I've tried to raise them right, and they know what to do in a certain circumstance. Um, not saying that that would ever happen. I'm just thinking that, um, safety is a big part of, uh, um, this warming shelter. Um, like I say, the, these other two gentlemen kind of hit on a lot of things that I was going to say, so I'll just leave it at that.
All right.
And hopefully you guys will make the right decision, and thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Next. Tom Busek? I thought everybody was going to be here for that other...
I did too. We got fooled.
Hi.
Hello.
I live at sixty-five fifteen Glen Echo, which is, uh, across the street from the church and up one. Um, my wife and I have had our, we built our house in nineteen seventy-two. When we built our house in seventy-two, the church was already there. It's our opinion that churches belong in neighborhoods. Neighborhoods are a good place for churches, as people can walk there, whatever. So they fit right in. The church, as we knew it, used to have a congregation of a lot of people, and they had Sunday services, sometimes Wednesday, Wednesday services. Then the church that was there decided to put in a school. And that school was only for kindergarteners at first. It expanded to high schoolers. So we got a full, full group of kids going in and out. Um, and thus the modulars were put back there for the school, for this purpose of the school. I can't imagine how anybody would allow eighty-eight people stuffed into those two modular buildings. First off, plumbing, sanitary facilities, eighty-eight people go into the bathroom, you can't... can't do that with porta-potties. That's ridiculous. If you take in eighty-eight people, where are they going to shower? Where are they going to bathe? That hasn't been thought out, that we know of. This whole thing was really sprung on us as of just two days ago. It's ridiculous that the word didn't get out before now. We had a person in our neighborhood who wanted to sell some property on the back of her house. We've got a map of that, we've got notification of that, everybody in the neighborhood got written notification. We have had squat on this. We have no idea what the plan is. This is absolutely rude of this church to think that they can do this. Does the church, the new church, plan on having Sunday services? Or is this only a winter shelter? It sounds like the church that's come in there, into our community, is quite a large church, a combination of a lot of different churches. Is it really concerned, are we really going to be having a church still in our neighborhood, or are we going to have a warming shelter in our neighborhood? The other concern, I think, with warming shelters and the proposal they have is that if you take buses out and pick up people all over the city, the southeast part of the city, bring them to the shelter because it's thirty degrees, okay, the next day it's thirty-five degrees, they all have to leave. Are you going to take them back out on the same corner that they were at before? What does that accomplish? You're not accomplishing a darn thing. You could just give each one of them a coat. A dumb idea. The other thing is, Gladstone is a community, a community, a bedroom community that doesn't really have industry or anything else here. Gladstone itself does not have a problem with street people. I've never seen anybody on any of our main streets out here holding up cardboard signs. We're not doing this for our local people, we're doing it for southeast Portland or wherever. This, what's wrong with our community here?
Thank you.
This really ticks me off, as you can tell. And I'm not even complaining about what it will do to property values, that has nothing to do with it. But if these people are kicked out of the church six-thirty, seven, or seven-thirty in the morning, and they start wandering our neighborhood, if they aren't bussed completely out, if the place isn't completely empty, I'm really concerned about what they're doing, just wandering out in the neighborhood and coming back the next morning, or the, excuse me, the next night.
All right. Thank you very much. Next. Roger Dias.
Hello, I'm Roger Dias. I live at sixty-four ninety, right next to the church, right to the entrance to the driveway. Like I say, most of the things have been covered, that my concerns, but when you had that map up, that church looked like it was right in the middle of a low-density residential...
Yes, seven point two, R seven point two.
Yes. And I don't know if that's even a, if they can even do that there, if that's allowed according to the zoning. Crime and safety and all that, and people loitering, that's my issue also, because I live right next to it. It wasn't so bad when we moved in with the kids outside playing, but I don't know about homeless people sitting outside in our bushes or whatever. Anyway, that's about all I have, other than what everybody else said. I agree with what everybody else says. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next. Last is Claire Coy.
So, you know, just, I've just actually heard this, I guess I didn't know it was up for discussion, but just a couple of things to mention, I also live on Glen Echo Avenue. Wow, no way, absolutely not. I have a family on Glen Echo Avenue. I have a daughter who comes home from work between ten and eleven at night. I have a son, I have a whole household, and I don't plan on moving, I just, I am totally set back by this announcement, completely. There is current police involvement on Glen Echo Avenue. I've been involved in some of it, just for some minor questioning, they're seeking out some woman that's evading a warrant or something. That's fine, I can deal with one woman that's got a warrant, but this many people roaming the neighborhood, like they've discussed, I'm also concerned about when they let out where they go. The gentleman that represented the organization said that it depends on the operator that night as to where, as to whether they'll be able to come and go. That's probably my biggest concern, because I don't know unless we're going to volunteer one of our policemen for being down there to make sure that they stay inside. I don't know how that would ever, I don't know how that would ever be governed, I guess is the point. So, because I'm sure they can have many operators come and go, and it's probably a lot volunteer-based. I don't even know how it's paid for, which is a whole nother point, as I'm sure it's going to cost something. On Glen Echo, we already have a real big problem with garbage. It's just kind of a busy road, and folks just like to toss things out their window. I'm constantly picking up McDonald's wrappers and things out of my yard, also real close to the high school, which could be part of it, but it's going to bring more of that. And I think just the use of our resources, our officers, the cost of it, mainly safety. My husband leaves for work, wee hours, I don't have to announce exactly what time, but I'm home alone. I'm not comfortable with this, and it was mentioned that it didn't go through the proper channels, so I think it needs to go to planning commission and do all the normal things it's supposed to do, so that everybody has time to talk about it. So, that's it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Claire, what is your actual address?
Sixty-three twenty-nine.
Thank you. So, this is a situation a city administrator never wants to be in. Yes. But clearly, what I'm going to recommend to the city council may not be popular, however, I think there was a lot of miscommunication. The city needs to work better with the county on that flow of information. I don't understand why the church wasn't told they have to apply for a conditional use permit several months ago. This is one avenue, if the city council wanted to declare an emergency, that they could allow this church to operate. You also have heard information that the fire marshal hasn't approved it yet, there's no fire sprinkler system, I don't know where that cell phone's coming from. So, can we all make sure that our phones are turned off?
I know.
Is it Michael's?
Sorry, go ahead.
And they don't, they don't have a fire sprinkler system, and they don't have beds. Fire marshal is working with the church on that, however, I want to read to you a section of the code. It says, "City zoning section fifteen twenty-eight zero one zero requires that application for such permit to be made in writing and be supported by signed statements indicating no objection from at least two-thirds of all persons owning property within one hundred feet of the property in which the trailer is to be located." One possibility would be for them to go back and see if they could get such approval, and then if the council wanted to declare that after a presentation had been made to the surrounding neighborhoods, we could then declare an emergency at that time. Otherwise, the city council could approve this, and I would still recommend that there would be a saturated outreach in that community, so everybody understands what the operations there. Or we could just simply require them to go through the planning process to get a conditional use permit. This is one of those things where we have to, we can't just randomly make decisions. We have codes and ordinances that we have to follow, basically. But we do have those codes and ordinances in place. Correct. She just read it. So, I would recommend that you let staff do a little bit more work with the applicant and have them reach out to see if there is at least two-thirds of persons owning property within a hundred feet of this that would approve to that. And we could then, at that time, come back and do either a correct council action, this resolution can come back again. If you feel like there needs to be more outreach to the surrounding areas, we could do that first, and then we could do an emergency resolution, or we could simply just put them through the conditional use process.
What if a hundred feet new, when they blow, blow the thing during the middle of the gigantic parking lot? You're not even going to reach that.
Okay.
It's property lines.
Property lines. Yeah, so...
So, that's that. The other thing is, they said there's a church in Oregon City not being used, I forgot to mention that, sorry, where the church in Oregon City that's not being used is their backup plan.
Okay, that's not what we're, that's not what we're talking about here, we're talking about this specific project, and everybody had a chance to speak.
Yes.
Yeah, we're having discussion up here now.
I have a couple of quick questions, Mayor.
Yes.
So, bathrooms, are there not bathrooms in there?
I haven't even heard from anybody from the church, myself. Yeah. There's lots of questions that need to be answered.
And then, do they, Mike?
People in favor of it. I don't know.
Please.
They were talking fire suppression, do they actually need that in there, or just alarms, right? Okay, thank you.
Inappropriate, sir.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, other questions for staff?
Could I just address...
Yes.
So, first I want to...
Could you, could you come forward?
Come up.
Again, my name is Dave Morris. I'm the pastor of Hillside, and I would certainly like to apologize if that would be received, I appreciate it. Our goal was never to not communicate by any stretch of the imagination, and I ask that you would understand that.
But you didn't.
We didn't. We initiated what we thought were the proper channels originally, and that was to go through the fire marshal initially, and then to contact the county and the city itself.
Mayor?
Okay.
I would, I would, I would, I would love, and we'll put everything on pause, we'll just put everything on pause.
I think that's the best suggestion. All right, that's probably the best thing, because this discussion, that should be a community discussion.
I would entertain and love to have everybody come to the facility, and I will listen to every concern, every, your heartbeat. I absolutely want to know your heartbeat, and I, from the depths of my heart, I had no, we had no intention of creating grief, so please understand that from where I'm coming. We became aware of the space and the space becoming available to us, as I said, on August twenty-third. It was not even an option for us at that moment, that we would, we even knew anything that we could do to help folks that are marginalized. I will say that is our heartbeat. We want to be a blessing to our community here in Gladstone and beyond. We are not a large church. I heard someone mention that we were a large church, we're not a large church.
Sir, sir, could we, because it sounds like now you're willing to remove this, so that we can discuss this after this... My suggestion would be that we tabled this... Yes. Declaration and allow administration to kind of work with the county and the fire marshal to see what kind of resolution we could come to, but that resolution would eventually have to come back to council for consideration. Right. It would involve the community input, yes. Yes, okay.
If I could say, if I could say one last thing?
Yes.
So, Mike and I have had several discussions about having a community meeting before we would move forward, and so that has happened in the last two weeks. We were waiting for what would Melissa, who is the contracted person of the county from Gladstone, what she would say the area and the space would be. I told Mike today on the phone, we would go and we would knock, or it wasn't Mike on the phone today, it was Bahid, I said, I would go and knock on every single door to make the invitation to whatever that epicenter was, to get everybody there, so that we could have this kind of a conversation.
Okay.
So, I do, I want you to know that those conversations will happen.
Okay, thank you. And please, do you want to be involved in the community meeting that he's going to arrange? I will follow up with Bahid to talk about what a good outline or process would be for that. Okay, then that's how we will proceed, we'll table this for now.
Can we make sure that in this process, we look at true community impacts and not presumptive impacts? Because I believe that part of this conversation, I think it is cart before the horse, quite frankly. I think that the process wasn't followed properly, not, I'm not pointing fingers or laying blame, but for this kind of, this is a hot topic issue in a lot of neighborhoods. I understand our citizens' concerns. But what I would like to see is that, as you guys are putting stuff together to really look at real-life scenarios for these facilities, what are the experiences in Oregon City, Millwall, and the other cities, so that we're really talking about what's really happening, not the fears that are out there.
Right.
I would also like our police department to be involved in that, so that they can help advise on it, so that we have some real information when it comes back to us, because this one, I think, caught us all off-guard, and it becomes emotional, and we spun out in the first two minutes of this conversation.
Sure.
Okay, so...
Just, that's all I'm asking from staff.
So, we're just going to...
So, we're good to go from here?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And I recommend that we take the long approach that we're supposed to go, okay, and cut back something that's not needed, but getting the citizens' involvement and knowledge is very important.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so that item is tabled. Next is item eleven, consider project enhancements for the Gladstone Civic Center. Okay, now we get to go shopping, pull out your project enhancer, and Steve and Jennifer, do you want to come up to the table here? Have on the dais, it should say updated November ninth of eighteen. Yes. Okay. We had gone through all of those thirteen items, what you will see, number two oh two now has a cost associated with that. And also, you can see, we have a construction schedule day that shows you, depending on what enhanced feature you choose, could impact the schedule. Hold on one second, could you guys take your conversations, excuse me? Excuse me, could you take the conversations out there so we can hear up here, please? Thank you. So, what we're looking for is guidance from you tonight on these items that are labeled "need decision by date of eleven fourteen." We had a very, very productive conversation last week, and so this really is a continuation to see if we could come to a consensus. We did come to a consensus, I believe, on the larger main lobby, correct? Yes. That was one that we decided. Yes. So, we're here to offer support and questions as you guys work through your seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, which you don't have to spend at all today. All right, so, do we want to go through it item by item and vote?
No.
I don't think we need to do that.
Well, I'm sure we all have a different wish list. You know, mine isn't even on here, which is green roofs, not even on the list.
Hey, Link.
Hey, Link.
A green roof. I think just to also summarize from an employee's perspective, we really like the idea of a larger lobby, higher ceilings, and as much natural lighting as what we can get, whether it's through glazing, sunroofs, or sunlight. But we also support the direct police vehicle access to Portland Avenue, and so that's really where our focus is. So, it's either the things the staff wants or a sloped roof. It says if you take what they want, add the sloped roof, then we're way over.
True.
All right, so larger main lobby, that's a given. Increasing the ceiling height from eight feet to between ten and eleven?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that pretty much a consensus?
How I feel, yeah.
But I'm seeing that, you know, that kind of means taking out the sloped roof.
Maybe, we don't know yet, we don't know where we are yet.
Money-wise, it appears to be.
Maybe not.
All right.
Okay, so, those two sound like they're...
Okay, so those two sound like they're a go. Increase the total glazing, more light.
Windows.
Adding more windows. That's 59,000.
Right.
In the grand scheme of things, that's pretty small. Is that not a?
Not for me.
Steve, is it helpful for you to remind us what tonight you need to get the GMP done? And some of these, we might involve community input for later time?
Yeah, I'll just follow up. So this is the list that's in addition to the 12 million that we have for the base scope.
Right.
These are suggestions that we've come up with through input from our team. None of these are required tonight, I will say that. They're strongly suggested to stay on schedule. And I will say that all these can be accepted in separately or in conjunction. So there's none that if you accept one, they have to be the other ones.
Right.
So I will just say that, that it really is, and we're up here to answer any questions you might have on the design or the schedule or things, but not really recommend what may work.
So the larger main lobby, increasing the ceiling height, those are for sure. Which is at about, what, 200, 330,000?
Yeah, I'm keeping score here too on my chart.
330,000. So that gives us another, what, 420,000?
And let me ask too, you've indicated that would add 14 days to the construction. Is it 14 plus 14? Or are these two things, two projects that are compatible enough that it would add a total of 14 or somewhere in between?
I'll answer it somewhere in between. Yeah, it's really hard to say until the combination's taken.
Yes.
Because they're not all additive, so to speak.
Yes.
Okay, so I hope that helps answer that question.
It does.
Okay, so that leaves us $413,000. The sloped roof is 433,000. The police access is 113,000. I think that was something we all kind of agreed on. Because we reduced it from an in and out to just an out.
Correct.
So from 24 feet to 12.
Well, we didn't have a price last time.
Right.
So that's where the.
So how do you feel about that one?
I'm ambivalent.
You're ambivalent on that one, okay.
I don't want to spend the 750, number one, so I'm looking at a $500,000 budget.
Yeah.
Because things are going to change and we're gonna maybe, or we will need more potentially something somewhere down the line. So that's why I don't think we need to get anywhere close to 750.
Okay, so if we're gonna do 500,000, that gives us 160,000.
Just as an idea, so.
And 1212 was not going to be recommended, that we change to the Cadillac HVAC system. So I think that one, we can leave there.
So then that would give us, if you wanted to stick with the 500,000, if you increase the windows, which is what staff seems to want, and maybe add the skylights? And we could still do heavy timber?
I think the skylights would be good.
I'm over that already.
Skylights would be good because that would definitely give more lighting.
So to stay within, I'm just going off of what we talked about last, at the meeting. We kind of, all of us marked a few things and we were in consensus. To stay with Counselor McMahon, I think we're running 201, 202. So that's the driveway.
He's ambivalent with the driveway.
The main lobby, the added height, the timber, and I believe the.
Windows.
Yeah, the heavy timber, and then you have to add the extra cost for the timber, right? The 14. And then the windows brings a cinet about 506, 346. And that seems like a lot of items there under the 750.
That seems like a good package.
Does that work, John?
What were your numbers again? 201, right?
201, 202.
Okay.
204.
Mm-hmm.
208, which has to also have 209 added to it, is that correct?
Yeah, because that's what we talked about.
And then 211.
Oh, the skylights, right.
The skylights to the windows.
I'm sorry, let's go back to, where's the windows?
That's 210.
210.
I think that puts you over if you.
Yeah, I actually.
210 will put you at about 540.
Yeah, I added that up to 545, 433.
Which is still a big savings above the 750,000.
It gives us wiggle room. I don't want, and that's just my impression, I don't want to.
I think we should add the skylights too.
Spend the 750, but.
And that's what we basically agreed to.
It's pretty close to what we agreed to, was it not?
I think we need to throw in the skylights too. It's 21,000.
They're fairly inexpensive. And I have them on mine.
Puts this up to about 565 or 570, or 570.
576, right?
I agree with Tammy.
66.
Yeah, we want lights.
Counselor? Can somebody advocate for the heavy timber exposed of what's the, are we, because we're not doing some of the other options for the exterior of the building? You like the?
It's a nice design feature. And it's gonna be a fairly blah building, so we can put some bling where we can put it. It gives it definition, it gives it some style.
And Mayor, if I might, the 12 foot, 113,000 on the 12 foot, did you guys go in a conservative side on that?
Yes, but realistic because there's access on the Portland Avenue, there's secure gates, there's a lot of things at play. It sounds simple, a 12 foot wide drive.
No, no, I'm not, I mean, an eight foot path.
Yeah.
I mean, we have a $28 million sidewalk going down here to the south of us, right?
I'll stay out of that one.
Okay.
Yeah, so I believe we went in with the right number, with the effort put forth since last.
Okay, but there's a possible cost savings there if things go right.
Potential.
I think that's a heck of a price. My buddy put in 20 yards of asphalt just in his farm, and it was $20,000.
Really?
Without any kind of, he did some validation and stuff.
Access points, right.
But, yeah, you know, he just did a big pad area that he increased with a four inch lift, and it was 20,000. I was surprised how much it was.
Okay.
So this 113 to me for actual structured built.
I stand corrected.
Driveway, for me at least, that was, that's not a bad price. I was expecting 200 or 300.
So, all right, so large main lobby, larger main lobby, the direct and secure police vehicle access, increasing the ceiling height from eight feet to 10 to 11 feet, heavy timber exposed structure in the lobby, heavy timber for expanded lobby, increase the total glazing from 15% to 20%, and add 12 units skylights at the lobby.
And we still, then we have a cost savings on the premium, or we're roughly about 200,000 under what we were allotted, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Still under 200,000.
The 750 was in the contract for enhancements as a budget for the contract.
Okay, so we just saved 200,000.
And I know we talked about the polished concrete floors. Is that something that's in here still, or is that?
That would be considered another enhanced feature that we could price up going forward, yeah.
That was lobby only for the most part?
Well, it could be, yeah, it could, well.
We were looking at wear factor and, if I remember correctly, and the aesthetics of being able to enter the building and have.
Yeah, it would likely.
Warmth of the timbers.
Right. Evolve into something in the lobby, yeah.
But those kind of things too are ones you could postpone to further discussions as we advance the design and present options.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because we really haven't got into that yet.
Right.
Okay, so do we want to vote on this one? Do I need to say it again?
I'm good, if you guys are.
Are we good? Councilor Mersrow?
I agree with the numbers that Counselor Tracy suggested.
Which is the list that I just went through.
That Mayor Stempel just went through?
Yes. Counselor McMahon?
Yes.
I know you're gonna say no, because you want the sloped roof.
Well, it's consensus, so I'll go for it.
Okay, so he's a yes. Counselor Milch?
Yes.
Counselor Neese? Counselor Tracy?
Yes.
Mayor Stempel, yes.
Oh, yeah. So maybe we can.
Wow.
Come up with 430,000 down the road.
That was easy. All right.
Thank you.
Cool, thank you.
I can think of a lot of other.
For coming and sitting through the meeting.
You're welcome.
I didn't get my name on the building. There you go.
Item to follow, so thank you.
All right, next is item, well, hold on, it's almost nine o'clock. Does anyone need a quick break?
Sure.
All right, quick break. A five minute break. Well, it looks like everyone's back, so should we just go ahead and, all right. Next is item 12, city administrator employment agreement. Staff.
Good evening, gentlemen, councilors. Anterum HR Director. Tonight I am seeking your consideration and direction on any modifications that you desire to the city administrator's employment contract. To give you some history, the evaluation process was approved in September, and then the actual evaluation of the city administrator was done on October the 9th. And the overall result of that was meet standards. At that time sought direction on whether there would be any adjustments to her contract. And because of time limitations, we tabled the issue and decided to bring it back tonight. Earlier in executive session, I provided you a lot of information on city salaries. And I gave you some indications on what the cost of implementing the classification and compensation system would be. I can tell you that the numbers that were discussed included an adjustment to the city administrator's compensation. So there is room within those dollars to do so if you so desire. Previously, I submitted you, submitted to you a comparability analysis of six cities who either have city administrators or city managers. Again, those cities are Canby, Fairview, Happy Valley, Milwaukee, Oregon City, and West Lynn. You have that, you have that chart. And I also provided you with the existing contract on the city administrator, which goes through December 31st of 2019. With that, I will answer any questions you have.
Questions?
You said you included an adjustment in the figures you provided us. Were you going to share with us what that adjustment was, or would it be appropriate to ask? I've not done this before, I don't know how it's usually handled.
We gave that sheet back, didn't we?
We did.
We gave that sheet back, so I don't even remember what it was.
I don't believe it was, was it itemized on that sheet?
I didn't see it.
It was not itemized in that sheet.
No.
It was included in the total dollar amount for the non-represented employees. And it was based on the comparability chart that you were provided last week.
Which I don't have. Can I take a look at it again? May I?
Yes, I don't have copies for everyone.
And you used a number, can you just say what the number was?
The number.
That you used for in the other.
Yes, I can easily tell you that. When you're looking at those six comparable cities, and you average those compensation packages, the total average is 149,151.
Mm-hmm.
Currently, including the 2% cost of living adjustment that the city administrator received in July, she is making 122,400. And then the other change to that chart was, at that time, she was receiving a $75 a month cell phone allowance, which has since been changed effective December the 1st of 17, to just be provided a cell phone, a city's cell phone. So that allowance is discontinued.
And what are, and what are the other items that she gets as part of her compensation package? She gets vehicles?
She gets a monthly vehicle allowance of 300. And she participates in the same VIBA program as all of the other employees. And I averaged it, I'm sorry, I did not average it. I used $1,500, which I believe was the maximum due on VIBA.
That would be per dependent? So if it's a single dependent, it's 500. If it's two dependents, it's 1,000. And if it's three or more, it's 1,500.
I understand, but I use the highest number that was allowed in that program. Because when you look at the VIBAs that are provided to the other city managers, there are also caveats based on dependent eligibility and stuff. And I don't have access to their personal information as to how many dependents they're covering on their health insurance.
So that we're on the record, will you please explain to us what a VIBA is? So that the citizens understand that.
Voluntary Employee Benefits Agreement.
Thank you, and it pertains to medical and.
Yes, you can, you can deposit funds into an account, which you can draw from.
Yep.
Usually nowadays, it is done by a debit card, so that if you have a copay.
Yeah.
Or you have a doctor that exceeds the amount that is allowed by your insurance company, you can pull the money out of that to pay for it.
Okay, we just want to make sure that people understand what it is. Thank you.
Actually, it's all over from Johnson.
Okay. So I have a question. On the budget report for city administrator, which is on page 3-2, down on the bottom, it shows 142,000. But that's not what we're paying her. So where did this, what's in this 142,000?
You're looking at a budget document?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you would have all of that in front of you.
No.
Jackie? What page are you on?
3-2. Under expense, personnel services, city administrator, 142,000, original total budget, current total budget's the same, and then period activity of 10,500.
I guess that includes your social security and FICA and whatever else. It's probably the total compensation.
I don't know, because that's the.
That must include all the associated payroll costs.
No, that's down below.
Yeah, no, it doesn't.
My monthly is 10,500. I don't know, it's budgeted at 142.
That's what I was wondering is, so we already have budgeted up to 142,000.
But we're not spending that.
But that's not what we're paying you.
My monthly salary is 10,500.
Okay.
So is this a conversation we'd have with Jackie too though? Or do we, I mean, do we just throw a number at you at the wall? Or do we, is there something that?
Adjustments to a city administrator or city manager's contract are done in open session.
Uh-huh.
Do you have the contract in front of you?
I do, I have the current contract.
We don't have it.
And again, that was provided to all of you.
I have a copy somewhere.
So does the, the contract is, is it until next December, correct? And this is amending the contract?
We just didn't get the contract.
Got it last time. Yeah.
Oh, I wasn't here, so that's why I haven't.
If you change Jackie's compensation package, the contract needs to be changed.
An increase figured in here?
To reflect the updated amount.
Can we keep the conversation down to one?
Yeah.
It needs to be adjusted to reflect that she's no longer getting a cell phone allowance, that she's been provided a cell phone. And because Counselor Reiser pointed it out at the, I believe, the October 9th executive session, this document required an annual performance evaluation during this contract. But the city charter says that the city administrator is reviewed every four years.
I think it says, it says at least every four years.
At least, right. Yeah, so this, so the contract proceeds.
Yeah, the contract trumps the charter language. Charter language. So I don't have the contract in front of me, I would like to see it. So I'm assuming what it says, you guys do an annual performance review. And at the end of your annual performance review, you can consider a merit increase. So if she's had a satisfactory performance review, which is assumed she has, then you're now considering a merit increase. now considering a merit increase. So, you know, it is a conversation that you should have with Jackie. But I would suggest staff recommends a number and, or, you know, somebody from the council recommends a number, and discussion goes from there.
May I?
Can I look at this? Okay.
Could I get the contract?
So what I'm seeing is, we're, we're talking about passing a resolution to amend directing modifications to the city administrator's contract. Those modifications are not all set yet. So are we not just saying to you, yes, we are interested in making the modifications to the contract at this point? And that the details of some of those modifications are not yet set? Or are we now setting the modification details tonight?
Just this position.
My understanding is that you would set those amendments tonight. And then, as the staff report indicates, I will bring that back to you for formal council action on November 27th.
I don't, I mean, maybe I'm missing something. I don't feel that there's a resolution saying that. I, maybe, I'll go back through it again and look at it.
Well, I, I agree with you, Counselor Tracy. I agree with you.
If I may, direct you to the, to the actual language that the city agreed to with Jackie. It says, "It is understood by the city and employee that city's yearly salary is subject to adjustment based on the city council's review of employees' performance and budget considerations."
Mm-hmm.
So again, what you are considering doing is adjusting her salary based on her performance. I don't know if that helps or not. But in terms of process, you are, you know, recommending a number and then directing Nancy to negotiate that with Jackie.
And the current contract is a two-year contract?
That's correct. It went into effect now, given it to you, I think it was October the 11th?
Yeah, in 17, until the end of next year.
Right.
Okay. Questions? Discussion?
Well, and I guess I don't have those other numbers in front of me. Because we also want to make sure that we are maintaining a difference between the boss and the next, for want of a better word, underlings. But the, the...
Police chiefs, the next.
Chiefs and stuff. But I don't have those numbers, and we can't discuss them right now again.
Hmm.
So, I mean, I would like to say we give her a 5% raise, which would bump her to $132,300, I guess is the starting point. And then, that's my starting point, I guess.
And we would be open for negotiation? Is that how you would look at it?
As a, yeah.
Actually, based on her current salary of $122,400 a year, 5% would put her at $128,520.
Well, my math, she just told us she gets $10,500 a month, times 12 is $126,000. By my quick math in my head, so I'm just, that's where I got my 5% more.
Checking with payroll this morning, the previous salary was $120,000. You received a 2% colo in July.
Mm-hmm.
So that brings you up to $122,400. Now, if you divide that, which I can't do in my head, and I don't have my calculator...
122...
122,400.
I do remember the, the 120 number. We're dividing by 12, right? 10, 10,200.
And then 300 additional for the vehicle.
For the, or vehicle, yeah, okay.
Oh, okay, so that's where the 10, 5 is.
Yeah. So if you added 5% to her current salary, it would put her at $128,520. Since I collected all of the other information from you, I would say that I reminded you that if we need to do a recruitment, that the recruitment was based on the middle step, which comes out to 130,032.
That's in the neighborhood.
For that, for that department director.
For a department director, so not for the city manager?
Based on all of the information that you looked at earlier tonight, if you have to do a recruitment for the highest department director, that director were to leave, the data that you presented, place the recruitment at middle step, which is at 130.
130 even?
30, 032.
I like your 5%.
I'd like to just stick at the 132, I guess, for a starting point. I'm looking at comparable salaries. West Lynn, $146,000. Canby, $147,000. Oregon City, 147,084. My number would be 146,400, which is, I believe, $12,200 a month. Now, if we look at that, and if we subtract off, I don't know if we should subtract off the other, the $75, no, the phone allowance is out, the $300 car is still part of it. But I would prefer to bring us in line with other cities. We're not Happy Valley or Milwaukee, but...
Right. But, but, I was gonna say the same thing. Those populations are a lot bigger than ours. And, and I can see comparing those maybe in other, as we discussed earlier, but to, to compare our city administrator to Oregon City, West Lynn, Lake Oswego, Milwaukee, I think is, is comparing oranges to apples. As, as mentioned earlier, you know, as the statute, you know, I think in this position, doing Malala, Sandy, Cornelius...
I'd throw Fairview in there, too.
Fairview, maybe. You know, some of the, the smaller cities in this area. Dallas is, I think, a little too far out personally. But again, city administrators don't necessarily jump ship for real local. They do have a tendency of moving across state or halfway across, whereas...
Country.
Well, yeah, true. Whereas other employees, I mean, we've had several police officers, you know, have left for higher pay to the county and other jurisdictions closer. So if we were in that realm, compare closer jurisdictions that are larger, I think would be more appropriate.
So you're saying population of the city being served is your, is to you a primary factor in determining what the salary should be?
Well, not necessarily primary, but one of the biggest, yeah. Because you're comparing apples to apples or, versus apples to oranges.
I, I'd have to push back a little on that. I think that the challenges in Gladstone merit that somebody, and warrants that somebody is patient and is able to maneuver very delicate political waters and, and work with a citizenry that has had some mismanagement and misguided in the past. And so, to me, that's, that's an inherent value right there. I don't, I, I hear you about the population, but I'm not sure that that necessarily, we don't work or operate quite like Lake Oswego or some of those other cities that have kind of a steadier course, I guess, Counselor.
That is, that, they're as contentious as we are.
Yeah. You just might not, I mean, we, we don't get the, you know...
Not really. I mean, yes and no.
The West Lynn tidings and all those. We, yeah.
They've, they've had turnover in West Lynn also.
Well, I, when I first worked on these numbers, I tried to figure out kind of a, a two-factor weighting system. And I looked at median income in these various cities. I looked at population in the various cities. And, you know, it was just not possible to come up with an easy correlation of all these factors. Because Oregon City has a population of 35,000. Milwaukee has a population of 20,000. But Milwaukee pays its city administrator 166,000, and Oregon City pays theirs only 147. So the city with, you know, nearly 80% or 70% more population pays far less to the administrator. So, you know, there's, there are other things involved. I don't know how much support staff there is. I don't know how many other departments there are to support the work. I know that our city administrator has, has found ways to provide for administrative needs that the city has by bringing in other people and identifying those needs well. And so, you know, I want to credit her with, with that work as well. Not that she's being paid for those jobs, but having the knowledge and the ability to, to fill in the administrative gaps in the city, I believe, has been a positive factor for her leadership.
And for the most part, there is a rebuilding from the ground up. I mean, we have an infrastructure that is beyond fail. I mean, having looked at the Public Works Report this last week. And we have to, we have to trust that somebody's in that position to be able to help us maneuver through this. I hear you. Yes, the other cities are more than likely, probably challenged as well. But they're not building from the ground up, and I feel like we kind of are here.
No, 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 I, I understand.
You and I can agree on a lot of things, Counselor Reiser.
I, I hear you, I hear you.
And we're not disagreeing on this. I just think we should pay some credit there. I just...
Yeah, no, 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 I understand. And I think, and I'm not saying no raise.
I, I, I understand.
I'm thinking, you know, as was mentioned here, 5% or 6%?
I'd like to do the 132.
132.
Why don't we make a decision on 132, yea or nay?
Would someone like to make a motion then?
Just curious, just throwing it, what percentage is that? Just a...
It's like a 6%, I think, 6 or 7.
I could tell you that it's, based on the current wage of 122,400, 7.5% would be 131,580.
So, that way it's a percent, and it's clean.
Excuse me. And to that, you would, again, no cellphone allowance, but the vehicle allowance would be added to that, and then the contribution to VIBA would continue.
Say the number again, please.
7.5% increase on the current 122,400 is 131,580.
We're sitting in town.
Plus the 300 a month.
The 300 allowance?
Yes, plus the VIBA.
No, 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 I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, you know...
I'm okay with this.
And Ms. McDonald, you said that the, that the department head paid, that you quoted earlier, that was, that was in the 132,000 range also? That figure you gave us?
It was 130,032.
Okay, a little over 130.
The midway point of the proposed range.
Of the proposed range, got it.
If we have to do that recruitment.
Would someone like to make a motion?
Yes, I'd love to make a motion that we offer to the city administrator a 7%.
7.5%.
7.5%.
Round it up to...
We'll do 7.5. That's, that's a much prettier number than 8. Two numbers there, so it's like double the 8.
Okay.
And then also, the other...
Continue the...
Continue the vehicle.
The VIBA.
And discontinue the, the phone and continue the VIBA.
Continue VIBA.
And continue the auto.
Continue vehicle allowance.
Yeah.
Okay.
I second that.
All right. Motion was made by Counselor McMahon and seconded by Counselor Mercero. Any further discussion?
Question. Ms. Betts?
Yes.
So, can you live with that?
Thank you very much.
I guess so.
Is that it?
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Are we going to leave the term of the contract still through December 31st of 19? And are we just gonna leave the language where she is evaluated annually? Or...
Can we vote on this first and then make, and then make a determination on that?
Yeah. I would recommend that you get direction from council on that, and then we vote on the resolution, which essentially incorporates that direction. And then we'll talk about those other issues.
Okay. So motion was made by Counselor McMahon, seconded by Counselor Mercero. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. All right. Now, onto the resolution.
So, I'm sorry, I misspoke.
Okay.
So what the resolution says is that, you know, you're accepting Exhibit A, and then Section 2 says the overall positive rating for the city administrators has initiated this discussion. City council has authorized interim human resources director to make modifications to the original employment agreement and prepare the documents for approval on November 27th council meeting. The contract modification will be retroactive to October 10th. So what I just heard you say was, you're also gonna ask council, council for direction on modifying the term of the contract.
Two things. One was the term.
Okay.
And you want that to stay the same. And then the other was, the current contract talks about an annual evaluation.
Mm-hmm.
And then you've got the charter language that says at least every four years. Do we need to clean that up in the contract?
So I don't think you need to clean up, I mean, legally speaking, you do not need to clean up the every four years. And again, just legally speaking, you guys can take this for what it's worth. The contract language that I read essentially gives the council the authority to decide if there's gonna be a merit increase based on her performance evaluation. That is a little bit more of a unilateral decision. Decisions about, you know, changing some of the other terms of the contract are more of a negotiation with Jackie. In terms of changing the effective date, I'm sorry, the, the end date of the contract and making some of these other, other changes of the contract that were not envisioned to be changed during the life of the contract is a negotiation with Ms. Betts. So it's a little different.
Nothing that gets done today.
It could be, but I'm just saying that it's a negotiation.
So then what we need to do is approve or not Resolution 1150.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution 1150, a resolution directing modifications to the city administrator's employment contract.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Counselor McMahon and seconded by Counselor Neese. Any further discussion?
So, and the modifications would be just...
Just the pay.
The pay?
Yeah. Well, so that, that's actually what I wanted to discuss. So those modifications are unilateral. You guys can make, make the changes to her pay, and those were envisioned for you guys to make a unilateral decision by. You can also ask Ms. Betts to enter into contract negotiations with you to change the terms of the existing contract to extend the term, if you would like, and make any other contract negoti, or changes to the contract.
We're just sticking with this for now.
I see, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So we have a motion to approve Resolution 1150. Any further discussion?
Well, so if we approve it, then that we're opening it up for future negotiations, correct?
I think you can do that anytime.
I think we've always...
Yeah.
You can do that anytime.
But I mean, but, but...
I think we're opening, we're allowing for the modifications that we're, that we're going back to. Because you and I agree, I think you and I are going back and forth. We just, there's no language here that gives us that indication.
All, all this, all Resolution 1150 is, give me direction...
Right.
On what to bring back on Resolution 1151.
And you modify the resolution based on the four details or three details.
That'll be on November 27th.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm going to do it based on the...
Okay.
So what, so what modifications are you thinking about bringing back?
None, just the pay.
The pay.
That's just it? That's what I was asking?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Okay, so not, not extending it or, or any other...
It'll be the pay, and then changing the cellphone allowance...
Right.
From $75 a month to a city providing cellphone.
Sure, okay.
Okay, got it?
Yes.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Resolution 1150 passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 13 is the Willamette Falls locks update and funding request staff.
So I think it's pretty self-explanatory in your packet. The city of West Lynn mayor is asking Gladstone to contribute $2,500 in 2018 and 2019 to go towards the Willamette Falls Locks Commission to oversee an effort to repair and reopen the locks. There's a copy of the letter in your packet. My suggestion would be that you take that money from the community promotions business development line item. And also that Gladstone probably needs to have a stakeholder on, on that committee going forward. And, and so I don't foresee any administrative issues with spending money towards that project.
I agree.
It's a great project.
It is.
I spent a day at the Clackamas County Water Tourism Workshop, and water tourism is gonna be a huge focus for them. 52 miles of the Willamette River on both sides of the falls. They're trying to get it designated as a national heritage area. So there's, there's a lot of cool things coming.
Yeah, there is. There's good opportunities.
And this is a, a nice piece of that.
Are you willing to come in?
Nope, nobody from Gladstone is.
I was at one time. It's been a while. You want me to make a motion?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion to approve that the city of Gladstone financially contribute $2,500 in years 2018 and 2019 to the Willamette Falls Lock Project. Additionally, the city of Gladstone requests representation, either voting or non, for the duration of the project.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Counselor Neese, seconded by Counselor Tracy. Any further discussion?
Just a clarification. We, we are asking for a vote.
To be at the table, yes.
Yes.
Okay, with them.
That's... Either voting or non.
Oh, either non.
I mean, if they, if they say there's no voting available, just having us participate, I, I would say yes.
Okay, any further discussion? All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. All right, do we have any business carried forward?
I have nothing.
All right. So business from the council, we'll start with Counselor Mercero.
None for me.
None for you. Counselor McMahon.
Well, I have great news. The Gladstone Seniors Foundation has ponied up and put a new roof on the senior center. The only downside was that the contractor forgot to put some tarps on or something potentially. I have no idea what the litigation will be. And they, I was so disappointed because we were gonna have a brand-new roof and I saw the roofing material. And then I go in the next weekend and they're pulling the ceiling down. The kitchen has been out of service for two weeks already. They just finally got everything dried out. And I would expect, on a hopeful note, four weeks before... But I wouldn't be surprised if it was even longer before they get the kitchen back up and running so they can do cooked meals. So right now what we're doing for Meals on Wheels is, they're just frozen meals coming out of Bateman from Salem. And I know Colin's working a little bit to try and see if he can find either Oregon City or Milwaukee to help us to at least start cooking the meals again. So they're hot meals that we are delivering. And then the, the congregant that come in on Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays for the meals, they are not coming in right now because they can't use anything. So it's very disappointing that we're getting a brand-new roof. But it's gonna, somebody's gonna, somebody's gonna pay. Well, they've already spent twenty-three thousand on just the water removal and stuff. That hasn't even begun to touch the remodel part. So it's gonna be seventy-five thousand dollar bill, I bet you, for the contractor on a...
Sixty thousand dollars.
His ninety thousand dollar contract that he had with the city to put a new roof on. I don't think he's gonna make any money, so that's all I've got, sorry. But they got a new roof, finally.
All right. Counselor Reisner?
Um, with the election last week, we know who our legislators are gonna be coming up. Well, they didn't change. So I'd like to propose that we have staff put together a letter to be sent to Mark Meek and Alan Olson for the mayor's signature, asking them for money for the library.
A million dollars.
Sure.
How much did I give Milwaukee? Six hundred thousand?
I, a lot. So, I mean, I would like to ask that we get a, a brand-new one along with, with the county one to throw in, since Cornelius got one, but I know that's a long shot.
I'll sign it.
So, so just, you know, I don't know, a million dollars or whatever you guys think would be appropriate. But we've gotta ask, so...
Yep, I will sign it.
What do you guys think?
I guess for a million dollars.
Yeah.
Worst they can do is say no and we'll give you a little bit less. All right.
So that's all I have. And I have a great Thanksgiving and see you in a couple of weeks, I guess.
Counselor Tracy.
I, I have nothing at this time, thanks.
Counselor Neese?
Nothing.
Counselor Milch?
Uh, one of my best days as a city councillor was a couple of weeks ago, serving alongside Counselor Neese in selecting people for the library planning task force for the Gladstone Library. We had some great applicants, good members of the community who we had, had not participated a great deal in city things before. And that, that process of selecting and getting approval is still going on, so I can't really say who the people were. But it was just very encouraging to hear the, their views, their understanding of, of what a library should be in the community. And I think that that will reflect the values of this community moving forward. And the cooperation of the county in this process has been just really positive. So I felt good about that day.
And I think November twentieth is when it goes, isn't it, Jackie? When they go before the council, the county commissioners?
Board of Commissioners, yeah.
Then we'll get our decision.
Is that it? All right. I would like to thank all of the staff that helped with the Halloween celebration, specifically Jackie, Haley, Tammy, Kathy, Yvonne, Public Works, the Police and Fire Departments and the library folks. And thanks Mindy, thank you to Mindy, for representing the Parks and Rec Board and helping out with the city table. I would also like to thank the local churches and organizations that stepped up and made this an even bigger event than last year. I think, I think it helped bring people together at a time when it was really needed. Friday, November thirteenth, thirtieth, put it on your calendar, is the holiday tree lighting party at the senior center. We will start gathering around six-thirty or so and turn the tree on at seven. We've got the little ones from Saint Stephen's coming to sing again, but we're gonna have a P.A. system so that we can actually hear them this year. We're gonna have cookies, cocoa, coffee and Santa. We'll be collecting items for the toy and food drive as well as money for Shop with a Cop. Our Charlie Brown Christmas tree will be beautiful. And lastly, throughout this incredibly contentious political season, some things have happened that I would like addressed. I'm asking that an investigation be done immediately regarding executive session litigation information that found its way onto a politically-driven website. The only people privy to that information would have been the sitting council, city legal advisors and certain staff. At the same time, very, very specific internal email information was provided. That again, would have only been provided to the sitting council, our consultant and certain staff. It's unfortunate that it happened and that it was so clearly politically motivated after spending a significant amount of time, all of us, city money, finding ways to work, to work together, this had to happen. That's all I have. Anybody wanna make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded by somebody?
Seconded.
Motion was made by Counselor McMahon, seconded by Counselor Tracy. All those in favor?
Aye.